Hey, welcome everyone. We are starting today with citizens' requests to speak. If you have any citizens, we have none. Then we will move on to reports. With the Community Relations, Tracy.
Thank you. Actually, the next three are all in the same document, so I'll go through all three of those. With respect to students and families under Community Relations, there are three highlighted areas here. One, ensuring that we are compliant with all of Wisconsin Act 143 school safety requirements. That's, that's an ongoing responsibility throughout the school year and working with each of our buildings to make sure that they are compliant. It's always one of our goals to make sure that we're sharing the stories out, the exciting stuff that's going on in our school buildings. Looking at our analytics from our two primary social media accounts, we are happy to report that there's been an increase in both Facebook and Instagram. We also have a Twitter presence and an Instagram presence, but Twitter is kind of not a whole lot of activity there. I mean, we post there, but there's not a growing population there. And then in preparation for our new website, we did survey all of our families to find out what were the things that they found most frustrating about our current website, things that they found useful in our website. So as we went into the redesign, we had that input. So we could set that up from the get-go to be more responsive to our families. Next slide is our team. Some of the additional work this year related to supporting staff as we continue to work on professional boundaries with students. We worked with the Office of School Safety to provide some training on compassion fatigue for staff at the beginning of last school year. We hosted an Awareness to Action with Awareness to Action Wisconsin Child Sexual Abuse Prevention Training for a leadership team and community nonprofits. Out of that work, we developed an action plan. It's a multi-year action plan, and there's a group of folks who continue to work on that action plan, reviewing policy and practice. And then separately, we worked, I worked with the School Administrative Assistance to meet each building's communication targets and begin that transition to the new website. With respect to our community, a lot of these things that you're already aware of, as far as our long-range planning and community engagement and those activities related to that. The additional point here about the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce, we partnered last year and again recently to host Job Fair. So we had our second annual Job Fair last week and have already scheduled the next one for 2026. And then just a note of my involvement with a variety of state and regional school safety groups just to help me stay current on school safety best practices. Questions? I'm going quick, but then we'll go on to Community Education. The data here in Community Education, we, we've been pretty consistent as far as the participants in Community Education, so and we're split into two different seasons, so fall, winter, and then spring, summer. And our numbers, like I said, are pretty consistent. We have three large events that we do each year. Each of these continues to grow though with the Daddy Daughter Dance. I'm not sure we have a lot more room. That's become a very large event. But we, we have the Mother-Son Night of Fun. This year, we had the Second Annual Puzzle Palooza. In, if you didn't know, January is Puzzle Month. And so we host the Puzzle Palooza, and we had 18 teams this year. We had great participation in that event. We continue to partner with IT and the High School National Honors Students to house the Senior Tech Club. And we work with over 50 community ed instructors. So these are not employees of the district, they're independent contractors, but we provide support to those folks as they continue to offer classes for the district. And then the last item here is School Age Care. This year, we, Michelle Hagan retired from School Age Care after 33 years in that position. Huge transition for us and kudos to Bev Hagan, who jumped in with both feet in, on June 1st. We welcomed nearly 500 students to Willow River for summer School Age Care this year. Very large group of kids. We had a total of 55 staff that have been working throughout the summer. This is the last week, I think. Custodians are happy to have this be the last week, and I know our staff would like some, a little time to breathe as well before we head into fall. We served 44 children in the 4K RAP Care Program, also just over 600 children throughout the school year in our before and after-school care program. And then I just added some statistics. We do an annual survey of our staff asking about whether they believe this is a good value for their families, whether they believe we're communicating well. Also questions about the activities and all of that. So we consistently receive high marks from our families who participate in School Age Care. So that's the three programs.
Are we seeing a change or an increase in the RAP Care now? We're in year, what, what year are we in for that?
For us, this will be our fourth year of RAP Care going into. Yes, so we are, right now, we're about 60 kids in RAP Care. And that number grows every day. I think, you know, we've got more families obviously signed up for 4K. But as the start of the school year starts getting closer, we have more families asking to participate in RAP Care and before and after-school care.
Molly.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask, I had kind of two things to ask you about. You mentioned earlier about the new website. So that will be live to parents next week? Is that, or is it the transition is kind of ongoing?
So our, yes, our new website goes live August 18th, fingers crossed. And I'm excited for it. It, it brings a, a much more robust system to our families. It's much more responsive. We know that most of our families access the website with their, their phones. And our current site is not as responsive as we would like it to be for a phone. This one is totally responsive to using your phone. So that's a huge advantage as we move forward. And the other part is I'm able to release some more responsibility to each of the buildings because I can kind of compartmentalize the site a lot more. So I don't have people wandering all around the site as we do right now. So I don't have to worry about somebody coming in and duplicating the whole site, which
Gotcha. That sounds like a, a great improvement. And then I just wanted to, overall, all this stuff is so great. Everything you do, you wear so many hats and you do such a nice job.
Thank you.
It just, everything you're doing, it's like, it's just great. But in particular, community ed, I know people love community ed. And this is a totally older thing that I'm gonna ask you. So tell me about pickleball. And are we having, are we getting new pickleball courts inside? Is that correct? In the wintertime, will people have the reserve courts? Or are there out, any outdoor courts at the different, the new and improved elementaries? Or am I totally misunderstanding?
The new North Hudson Elementary does have pickleball lines on that court. The middle school gym has pickleball, the high school has pickleball, I believe. Nope.
Not on.
Yes, no.
Yeah, I think so.
Inside?
No.
Inside, not on. No, 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 inside. That's where we hold most of our classes, are at those inside locations, which all fill up right away.
And we'll get, we have a lot of new asphalt. We have a lot of new, a lot of new asphalt going in at the elementaries. We're gonna get pickleball lines eventually striped on those outdoor areas as well.
Thank you, because you know how it is. You get to a certain age and you either watch birds or you start playing pickleball.
The other thing we'll, we're excited to add with the new gymnastics space, space at North Hudson is, will be starting to offer tumbling classes and early gymnastics classes.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Mr. President. Um, I just wanna echo what Molly said and say thank you. Really excited about those tumbling classes, because one of my children just asked me and I was like, I can't be driving to River Falls or Woodbury for this. And I just wanted to say thank you. The School Age Care Program is great. I think that the quality, the like, the giant magnet tiles, like the toys kids have to play with, it's really an amazing program and really makes it easier for working parents. So thanks for all you've done to run that program.
Thank you. It's a great team.
Thanks, Tracy. Next up is Instructional Technology, Amanda.
Follow me here.
Jess.
Well, good evening. If we haven't met, I'm Amanda McCarthy. I'm the Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning for Technology. I oversee all IT throughout the district. So I wanted to start with our students. We rolled out the new Chromebooks. We shared that last year when we were here. But we got those into our system. One of the really interesting things, our staff started, because we track repairs, noticed a repair trend, and we were able to find an issue with our Lenovo Chromebooks and bring it to Lenovo and worked with them to get it fixed. So our staff did great work there. I wanted to highlight the students who work in our office. We have anywhere between one and four students who are in our office every single day. And they take on part of our workload. So you can see the things that they've done this year. We had over 400 Chromebooks in addition to the 612 Chromebooks that we purchased last year. They unpacked and inventoried all of the new high school laptops, support duplicating, they're inventorying, unpacking, dating, asset tagging our equipment. They update all their TVs across our buildings and then basic office tasks. But if you think about the work that these students are able to do, it's work that we would be doing in our office, and it just makes our office so much more efficient. And it gives these students an opportunity to learn life skills and be a part of a workforce in our space. So our team did some big work this year. One of the biggest things you may have heard, but Windows 11 is going away, or Windows 10 is going away. And every single laptop, every single device that runs on Windows 10, we had to update it. And so many of them, we were able to just magically make that happen without ever having to touch a laptop. But we had to account for every single laptop in our environment and get everything updated prior to school starting this fall. We did a pretty significant infrastructure upgrade to the wireless. So we put in over 200 new access points. And then a new wireless controller, that is the brain that makes all of the access points work. And so what we should see for our staff and the people who use our resources in our district is better, faster access to our wireless. Our staff at the high school will get all new laptops this fall. Many of them have already picked them up. We have a few remaining in our office, but that'll be a great update for them. We replaced over 100 of the mini computers. The mini computers are the devices that run the Epson boards. So in a typical setup in a classroom, there's a small little computer that runs it. Wouldn't you know, they ran all in Windows 10. So many of them weren't able to be updated because of their age. So we replaced over 100 of them. Like we do every year, we did a large batch of recycling. And so all of our computers that are no longer usable, iPads that are no longer usable, or equipment we're pulling out, we're able to recycle that and then use some of the resources we receive from that to reinvest into our IT. And then we sent out over 2,000 Swedish fish. So as you know, we send out those fishing emails every month to our staff. And the graph is really important. So the dot on the far left is May of 2024. So that's when I took the position. And we were sitting at a fish prone percentage of about 7.1%. Over the course of the year, you can see our graph slowly declines. We ended in April at, I think it's 3.2 or 3.3%. So we made a significant change, and that represents the people in our environment clicking that fish hook, noticing those fishing emails, and it ultimately makes our environment much more secure. So I'll talk about kind of how we got there in a minute. Go ahead to the next slide. Construction, obviously, was an enormous theme for us over the course of this year. Our team, all but two, donned a hard hat and got in there. One, because they were medically unable to do it, and another one because somebody had to be there to answer the phone. So one person just stayed and everybody else was out. For every single space that was a part of construction, our team had to be in there twice. One to deconstruct and one to reconstruct. So we were busy. You can see some of the things we did. We obviously were putting things up, hammer drilling. The picture in the middle is Steve, one of our IT specialists. We had to move the network at North Hudson. So it was located in one place and we had to completely move it to a new room. It's a, was a day-long process, but we also were able to do some cleaning. The picture on the right is one of our network racks. So we have these two big four-post racks that hold all of our switches, that make all of our internet run, and they needed to polish the floor underneath it. So the only way to get that done is to lift the entire rack off of the ground. So if you could see the top, you'll see some ratchet straps and some really interesting mechanics. But we got it off the floor. The floor is polished. It looks beautiful. The bottom is part of construction that I think we often don't think of. So we have old infrastructure in place that we don't need anymore. So if you think back in the day, we had computer labs and every sing, every single computer had to plug into a cord to make it run. That picture on the bottom right represents, it's the back of a pickup, and it's one of the loads of cabling that we were able to remove because we no longer need. Let's go ahead to the next slide. We did work alongside facilities and finance to implement a new help desk. We had an IT help desk and we had a facilities help desk. And then we had a process where if you needed the interschool delivery person, that was a different process. And if you needed to schedule catering, that was a different process. So we took these paid tools, merged them into only one paid tool, and the entire district will access the help desk regardless of the support that they need. And so that was a really great upgrade and a great collaboration among all of our departments. As far as the IT team, we responded to over 2,500 IT tickets. Average is about 255 per IT staff member, and that's every single person. That's me, that's my administrative assistant, that's everybody. So it was a busy year in terms of getting people what they needed. The last piece is the way we interacted with our community. So Senior Tech Club, Tracy talked a little bit about that. We averaged about 40 participants in each session. And we integrated the National Honor Society students, which was an amazing help because the participants in Senior Tech Club got individualized support. The other way that we, as an IT department, impacted our community was cybersecurity. It was a big year of studying and implementing cybersecurity. The beginning of the year, we applied for a federal cybersecurity grant. Unfortunately, we didn't receive it. But the opportunity to apply for the grant, we audited, we studied, we determined where our strengths and our weaknesses were in our environment. And now we have a clear plan moving forward. One of those clear plans that we took forward was NO Before, which is the phishing training. And as you saw on the past slide, we had a decrease of 3.8%. We also implemented activities with Cybersecurity Awareness Week, which I think was part of the 3.8% decrease. But just a couple of facts for you to be aware of, the why cybersecurity is important. I know you all understand it, but 82% of the reporting K-12 schools, and this is an MSI SAC report, reported cybersecurity impacts. So I think often we think, oh, we're little, we're Hudson, it's, this isn't us, it's everybody. And so the safer we can make our environment, the better trained we have our people, better plans we have in place, the better we're able to respond when something happens or if something happens. So that's what's been going on in IT this year. What questions can I answer?
Mr. President.
Erin.
What's your biggest ticket?
My biggest, like, IT ticket?
Yeah, the one that you get the most. You had, you had a lot of them on there, over 2,000 of them. Is there an average of like, this is the ticket we get the most of?
I would say probably, Laura's laughing because we just had this conversation today, rostering, getting people resources in the timeline that works for both us and them. Because our timeline isn't always their timeline. And, you know, technology, you think it works and you've tested it and it worked. And then when somebody else goes to log in, it didn't work. So, yeah.
It, it's a really big job. I appreciate all your work that you've done to secure the, the network for the district, and I have a lot of appreciation for that. We do that at our work. That phishing stuff is, is real. And just training people on knowing the difference between this is a spam email versus not is, it's a large undertaking just for that piece. And, and I love seeing the cords come out. That's great. And my last comment is, I really, I think it's so fantastic that we're utilizing the students in being able to help in that department. As a student, I would have so appreciated being able to be in that room instead of having to be stuck in the classroom. I think it's, I just think it's awesome that we're using our students like that. So, good drive.
Thank you.
And I would add, if you had to point your finger to one administrator that is, that is, needs the most help with the phishing, could you point just in the direction maybe?
President, I don't think that's a wise choice on my part, but thank you.
I've got a lot of Swedish fish. I turned it in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have in Teaching and Learning with a New Face, Shannon. Oh, okay.
I thought I'd take this on since Shannon's relatively new to the position, so. I often kind of think at the end of each school year, like, well, next year's gonna be so easy because we've implemented so much this year that next year can't possibly be as busy. But then if you look at our plans for the 25, 26 school year, I realized very quickly, like, it's gonna be just as fun and exciting as it was this year. I'm just gonna highlight a few of the things from each of these lists. So our new Student Learning Experiences in 24, 25, the first five bullet points on this list, you can see that we implemented five new curriculum, high-quality curricular resources. And the purpose for us implementing these curricular resources is to ensure our teachers can fully focus on instructing the students, making sure that they're learning and making sure that they're engaged, rather than focusing on what are we gonna teach our students each day? That was a huge undertaking, and I want to credit the teachers who were involved with that because teaching a new instructional resource is kind of like being a first-year teacher all over again. And our teachers just handled it with such grace and such professionalism, and our students are really seeing the benefits, and we're even seeing that in our data as we move forward. The other thing on this first left-hand side of the list I want to draw your attention to is our Act 20 implementation, which the whole state of Wisconsin was working with this year. But I'm so proud of the work that the team did for our students. The state requires us to implement personalized reading plans for students in grades K through 3. Our team decided that we don't see a world where Hudson wouldn't also extend that, those personalized reading plans to grades four and five. And so the amount of effort that went into creating those personalized reading plans by our reading specialists gave countless students the individualized support they needed to get caught up with their reading. And our data shows that when we know exactly where kids struggle and can focus those interventions in that exact area, we can really make progress. So we're really excited about that. Moving ahead into 25, 26, we'll continue to reflect and refine upon the implementations of our current resources, but we're also going to be expanding. So we'll be moving, CKLA will be going into grades K through 2, so we'll have a full K-5 implementation of CKLA. Will be, secondary math implementation will be expanded to geometry and Algebra II. And then I'm, I'm gonna skip to the bottom of this list because there's a highly anticipated launch of the Welding Academy. We're excited about this because it gives our students an opportunity to receive credits toward a full welding technical diploma at Northwoods Technical College, which will jumpstart their post-secondary education and their career. So on the next slide, this is just, oh, yeah. Core Knowledge Language Arts. Yes. And that's one of the four curricular materials that was endorsed by the state of Wisconsin to meet the criteria for Act 20. So this is just some pictures of our students interacting with several of our new curriculum implementations, and I hope you can see the engagement that took place. So for our team. The reason our team exists is for everything we just talked about in the last few slides. Our success as a team is determined by the success of our students. And so I want to just highlight that coming into this next few weeks of school, our instructional coaches and literacy specialists will be offering over 60 hours of professional learning for our probationary staff to just ensure that they get off on the right foot and have a successful school year. In addition to that, the support that each of our instructional coaches and literacy specialists provided for the implementation of these five new curriculum resources is beyond compare. They worked so hard to ensure that they knew the curricular resources inside and out so that they could work alongside our teachers to co-teach, co-plan, and just work alongside them to make sure that our students had a good experience and that teachers felt supported. And then you can see that we're continuing to train our elementary teachers in the science of reading, and an exciting expansion to that is that we're moving that science of reading training to the middle school. And then that 2,000 hours of professional learning through instructional coaching is such a foundational piece of our professional learning platform. Our coaches work so hard to learn what's happening in education so that they can give people the individualized learning that, that they, that they want. The next slide is just kind of a picture showing, in the bottom left-hand corner, one of our teachers and our, two of our coaches wrote a grant to go to a National Core Knowledge Language Arts Convention, and they, you know, they do that so that they can bring that knowledge back to support our teachers. And then we have some different professional learning opportunities that our coaches provided throughout the school year. And then finally, our community, this is an amazingly important aspect of our team to create opportunities to engage with stakeholders about what's happening in the Hudson School District. Not only to tell the story of our students' experiences, but also to create partnership and two-way conversations that contribute to the outcomes for our students. So the two main ways that we were able to do that within our department this year is through the Teaching and Learning Advisory Council, where we work to share and receive feedback on what's new with teaching and learning. The four bullet points are the four areas that we covered throughout the school year. So there's a core group of council members who come and engage in the curricular materials, and they ask questions and give us feedback. The second one is the Character Education Council. And this was a really interesting opportunity to be a part of and work alongside the team to, to create this event. The goal of this council is to create a set of community-developed and supported character traits that can be taught and reinforced in the Hudson School District. The committee consisted of 40 community members. 20 of them were from the Hudson School District staff, so that includes teachers, administrators, school counselors, health office, et cetera. And then 50% were comprised of parents, clergy, mental and healthcare providers, business owners and community nonprofits. So there was a really great representation from our community. You can see that we went through the process in each of the meetings listed on the slide. We wanted to talk about what character education is and what character education is not so that we could come to consensus on key character traits and their definitions that the Hudson community endorses and wants to support within our students and our community. So that's just a brief overview of the work of teaching and learning in the 24, 25 school year. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Megan.
Thank you for such a great report. I love CKLA. I love seeing what my older kid was working on, and I'm really excited to see what happens this year with the expansion to K-2, as well as the expansion with the new math curriculum, especially, you know, it's not all about test scores, but it is good to have measurement and seeing what happened with middle school math scores this past year and seeing how that it's, it's clear you've all done a lot of work and our teachers have worked hard. And they've, I, you know, been really well-supported. So, thank you for reporting. And Shannon, great to have you here. Thanks for stepping into this role.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Facilities and Grounds with Dustin, an underappreciated job, I would say.
I don't know about that, but we've had an interesting year. So, kind of theme for us is just continuous improvement and continuing programs we put in place, and and we're really trying to fine-tune and make better CLC on their ADA door access. We continue with that program, just improving the access to each space. Our high-contrast strips really tackled last year, and I'm just trying to identify and improve those areas. Big highlight was the completion of the EP Rock Playground. Finally got that done and set, and then did a bunch of construction and closed it off to people. River Crest was a neat little project. Did a bunch of construction and closed it off to people. Um Rivercrest was a neat little project. We're trying to match. Uh their carpet, their seventeen-year-old carpet with North Hudson and and Rock, so that's coming along nicely. Uh we implemented a door repair replacement program, um just to really track and and manage better what doors are replacing, repairing, kind of useful life of those. Um as far as continuous improvement, just year two in our gym floor service program and our weekly turf care, that's been um good for the useful life of those. Uh big pool upgrades this year outside of the referendum project, really from a safety standpoint, you can see everything we did up there. Um we transformed a existing science lab um into a transition lab, which is a cool project down the way from my office. Uh finished the Willow River Chiller Project. Um this long ongoing sentence next, the practice turf mobile softball fencing, it's just a. Big set of fence that we can take up and down and and that practice turf in the back of the high school can be used for lacrosse, softball, soccer, so it's a. It's a nice addition. Um I should have said on Newton, I didn't mean we recycled all the bleachers if you've driven by just the the road bleachers, so the school can kind of use that. That side for FIAD and other uses once they get back in there. And then if you guys haven't seen the middle school, the media center, we tackled um. Kind of new bookshelves, um Bonnie was instrumental in that and then uh new paint that recently went up, we took care of it. It's kind of a cool design, gets rid of all the gray, so it's a. It's a good look. So on our team, um still working with CISA, they provided our annual, our CISA ten, our annual safety training. Um they took our feedback, made it. Fun, more fun, as fun as safety training can be. Uh we got our lead custodians, we use heads and leads as different language, but our leads are nighttime folks that are in charge of the building, got them up to Amory for a. Wasbo conference, that was pretty good. Good feedback on that. Uh folks and cheers for peers, updated our district annual asbestos coordinator. Um partner with the fire department once again, just for identifying safety hazards, they've been great to work with. Uh four new CPOs or certified pool operators, I'm one of them. Real exciting. Um like I said, still working with CISA ten, uh year two of the safety walk-through with them, which has been great, that's been helpful in the schools. And uh of course, worked through and supported referendum projects, which has been chaos. Nice pictures. Uh community is always a good one and there's just, I can't list them all, but um you you folks have seen it all, the. Their Spring Expo, Hot Air Fair, which went to Rivercrest, uh Pepperfest, which um. They're kind of not using our kitchen right now at North because it's under construction, but we still did go work with them last year. Tons of dance recitals, quilt show, craft fairs, uh everything. And then like I talked about earlier, our lead custodians at. Uh middle and high school just have been really instrumental. They've they're kind of the point of contact and they've just had a phenomenal uh run here the last couple of years. They're really working with. Community members. Uh year two of our pavement management improvement plan, um which has been great, that's really helped us identify. Spaces that need repair versus replace and then cost it out over a series of ten years and we've we've done a good job following that. Um we did, we partnered with the uh canine-dog trials again. I don't have that neat picture of a dog jumping out a window, but get the idea. And then um partner with the city once again, they did uh Rivercrest last year, um and then E P Rock this year, so. What questions you have?
So first of all, I just want to say every time I've been to an event at night with my kids, whether it's swim or. Any number of things, the custodians are always extremely helpful and friendly and happy, which is great to see. Usually if you're happy at work, means something good's going on, so thank you for that. Um what is the difference between a science lab and a transition lab? Is one thing I just wondered as.
So student services could help me better with that one, but it was an existing um chemistry, uh so. I think transitions is more for uh kids not in the traditional uh school going out. You can help with that. Thanks. I was tap dancing forever there.
You're doing a good job. Uh they transitioned the lab into the pays lab that I shared about, that was that workplace lab that we um. Are going to be starting this coming school year. So that's what that is.
And it was not one of our new labs, it was one of the labs we didn't remodel, the original remodel.
It was brand new and then we changed it. Oh, yeah, you're.
Yeah.
Nick's right.
Yeah, so it wasn't, it wasn't one that we just did and then changed it again. It's one that we didn't do, uh we did the high school remodel.
Down on the west end of the high school.
Mister President.
Molly.
Thank you. Um I love how you talk about continuous improvement and again, seeing all the hats that you have to wear and the things that are going on. I don't know how you keep it straight, but good job. Um and I also want to note, I mean, we know that our schools are used for community things. But what a tremendous asset we have um that is available for everybody to use and we all pay our taxes for it. And we all get to use it and enjoy it and it's great to see how um well-cared-for the buildings are and the projects that you guys kind of. You know, have ongoing. So thank you so much and thank you to your team.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I would say that, you you know, I'm I work in facilities and and I know how difficult it is, but I am glad to hear. That we, you know, for budgeting purposes, that, you know, you have, you know, like the asphalt um monitoring plan and things like that, how important that is. Uh important that is to help us, you know, get things, you know, keep things running smoothly for the district. So having that uh. Good information. I would also ask uh the the turf fields are how old now?
So it would have been the the referendum for twenty-eighteen, so twenty-seventeen install.
I noticed that, you know, I saw the fence go in for the softballs, a movable fence. I see a lot of, you know, I live right by it, so the the turf fields, I see everything from. You know, e-bikes running around on there to God knows what else, but um I mean, what is the condition of that? What is our expectations and?
Yeah, so when we implemented the um kind of our turf care program, um you know, useful life was hoping to get twenty years out of it. Um but I I think through both the kind of the management of the pellets, uh the seam identification, which needs to be repaired. And then just the general, we have like this, it's called the kitty, it it picks up all the trash and and smooths out the beads. So I think if if we can. Keep that up, we can probably stretch that.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh moving on to enrollment updates with Andrea.
Okay, so our monthly update for enrollment, what you can see here is we do have some celebration and that we are above three hundred kids right now, knock on wood. At the kindergarten level, so the first time I think all year. So we're at three oh five um for K, uh and then we continue to monitor. Um class sizes, this is updated as you can see as late as last week and uh we are. Definitely aware of the Rivercrest third and fifth grade situations and um being at the high end of our class size guidelines. Uh one above in each of the four classrooms. Um and we plan, we've been working closely, both Shannon, Paula Blatner and myself. Uh plan to have some conversations about some supports that we can do in that area, but that's really the only bubbles. Um for this entire enrollment document. And then high school, middle school as well. So uh you can see we're up ten kids at the middle school and we are up. About ten kids as well at the high school. So um monthly update, we'll give you another update in September, but these are good trends. But they're still certainly down from last year's numbers in terms of overall enrollment. Any questions for me?
Sorry, Mister President. Um on on the first sheet, um. In the total, it has on the left, a hundred and thirty-four school sites, two hundred and eighty-three enrolled. Is that the four K data or I'm just wondering?
That's the four K data and actually Sue texted me a little bit ago, um and as of today, it's two ninety-one overall for the four K. So right now it's such a fluid number, especially at the four K level, um but she did just let me know that it's at two ninety-one, so I don't yet know how that's broken down. Between school sites and district sites or school sites and community partners, but um it is a number that's going up.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have uh back-to-school updates with Nick.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Erin, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask what um strategy you have for those Rivercrest overflows that are twenty-eight kids in the two and two. Classrooms.
In the third and fifth grade, yeah. I know Paula's already been talking to the teachers and we're meeting this Thursday to come up with some. Um options of support, what what will actually help the teachers in those situations versus making it more work for them. Um we are very concerned about any potential posting this time of year and the quality of candidates um that we would ever get in that situation. So we really think um based on conversations that it's best to problem-solve with the experts, which are the teachers. Uh and then having Paula and Shannon and all of us working together to come up with some options that uh can um support. Both third as well as fifth grade.
Did those numbers, did those number, how mu- how much did those numbers jump up from the last time that we reviewed this?
Not much. I mean, it went from twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um we're monitoring almost on a weekly basis and Paula's been um making both. Shannon and I aware as this is coming in. Um and so eh the problem is that twenty-seven, they're still within our class size guidelines. And we just never know in the month of August. Who's going to move in and who's going to move out. So yes, it's something that we've been closely monitoring, um but now it's officially gotten to twenty-eight, 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 twenty-eight. And that's what triggers additional conversation.
Got it. Thank you for working with those teachers.
Nick?
Absolutely. So um just a couple of things to go over with the board with the welcome back. It's hard to believe that school's just around the corner. Kids start two weeks from tomorrow. Uh we will have uh staff, new staff in the building starting on Thursday of this week, so we are moving through. A couple of things to invite the board to, and I believe Tim sent an email out, we have the new uh educator uh luncheon. That's hosted by the chamber, but it's right at the high school, all the board is invited to to attend. It's about eleven-thirty, eleven-forty-five is about when that luncheon. Um yeah, it happens. Uh you'll be able to listen to keynote from your very own Bob Bowman. Uh who will be, you know, just inspiring those new educators for us. Uh so uh we'll work through that. Uh Monday, uh we, again, uh we have uh new staff will be with us again. So they basically start on Thursday, Friday, Monday, and then all staff uh basically uh start uh start reporting on Tuesday. Or I'm sorry, on Wednesday. So they will have some work in their buildings and some meetings on Wednesday. And then we have the district day. Um the opening uh wellness walk and district meetings. So we're doing it in the morning this year, a little bit different. Um we've done them in the afternoon in the past. Um. We do not have a speaker this year. We're going to try something a little bit different. Uh we'll see how this, we'll see how this goes. It, I think we have some people that are really. Excited about it, but kind of some staff Olympics and some different things going on, so it should be a lot of fun. Uh but you know, the board is absolutely welcome to join us for any of the wellness walk, the breakfast at the high school or the welcome back. Uh again, you'll get to hear uh Bob a second time uh speak and inspire the entire staff. At that point. Um so.
I think uh I think Kate was going to help out this year, but.
As a former Olympian, just kidding.
So um yeah, so and then, you know, you can see where some of our uh our sixth-grade orientation slash open house is the night of the twenty-first. Uh middle school open house and then the high school freshman orientation slash open house is that evening also. Um and then uh our elementary schools have their meet the, meet the teacher nights are Monday night, right before school starts on the twenty-fifth. Uh we do have a board meeting that night, uh but it is elementary meet the teacher night uh that that evening and then the first day of school is on the twenty-sixth. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. Another date, uh that's a fun date, uh to, would invite the board to is our all-staff barbecue. We do that. Is kind of a family event, uh where we invite all of our staff and their family members, uh and we do a barbecue before one of the games. We rotate between volleyball, soccer and football, uh and try to uh bring our staff in. We usually get, I don't know, four or five hundred. Uh people that do attend that and it's a pretty fun event. Um they get to stay and watch whatever game it is that night and and. Uh have a have a cheeseburger or brat maybe, I don't know, maybe the, maybe it's just cheeseburgers, I can't remember what we do. Um but uh really a great event. So if you want to be a part of that or attend, we'd love to have you. Usually kicks off around five-thirty and goes to about seven, seven-thirty. So, look forward to that. So that's just kind of some back-to-school stuff and some dates to kind of keep in your mind. Um the only other thing that we have coming up that I just put a plug for is we do have our annual meeting that is coming up. Um and that will be at the high school. So this is our last uh televised meeting coming out of the district, uh the current district office as we get ready to move over to the middle school. But the annual meeting, uh which is September eighth, is at the high school. So that'll be our next regular meeting. We do a regular board meeting ahead of that meeting. And then we followed up with the annual meeting that evening as well. So um just a couple of things as we get ready to start back to school, some dates to keep on people's calendars. Any questions about back-to-school activities or what we have going on? All right, so I have the next item on the list. Uh we're really excited to present to the board. Our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-thirty strategic plan. You've seen a draft of this this spring. Uh it was, it didn't look this good. Uh Tracy did an outstanding job uh doing all the graphics related to this. Um this is really kind of our roadmap over the next five years. We're not changing our mission statement, we're not changing vision statement or our um our values or anything like that, but it's really the roadmap. This is all comes from uh the conversation that we had, the community conversation that we had back in twenty-twenty-four. And it talks a little bit about that on page three, where um you know, what this process has been and and what we're working through. And how we got to the point we are, we are at. Uh the the plan is really, is really kind of based around uh the the four areas. The educational excellence, operations, well-being and partnerships. So the last strategic plan that we had was based around more around the audience. It was more around our kids, our staff and our community. Um so what we're really doing is we're kind of changing a little bit and we have those. We have those audiences built in within each of the, I don't know, they're not really pillars, you call pieces of the pie, however you want to, however you want to phrase it. But um what you see there, uh starting on page four is each area, so uh educational excellence, you'll see there's a focus area, so it talks about academic achievement. You know, what we're hoping to accomplish, you know, all ac- you know, all students demonstrate academic growth in reading and math. And then what you start to see is the action plan in place, um the interventions and who's doing what. So on the far right side, the timeline. Um as we met as a leadership team, one of the things we talked about is you can't do everything all the time. I mean, and everybody can't start everything all at once. And so uh we broke the leadership team into groups. So we have the elementary group, middle school group, high school group. We have a separate group that's. Uh teaching and learning, so instructional side, which includes student services, uh but even there, they're kind of broken out a little bit. And then we have the operational side, which also. Breaks up a little bit into human resources, facilities and grounds and uh and finance. And what you can start to see is. We we have a lot of other things that are going on, but these uh these initiatives or these things that are going on are when, when they're going to start and how long we think it'll take us. To get fully implemented in these different, these different areas. And and who will actually uh be responsible for some of these different. These different components. And so um academic treatment is obviously going to be uh much heavier in the areas of elementary, middle school, high school. Uh and on the instruction and student services side, there is, you know, human resources does have a component in it, but as you work your way through. Uh educational excellence and the different areas, you can start to, you can start to see who are our target audiences, what are we, what are we trying to do? Um you know, what we heard from the community conversation quite a bit was more partnerships. We want to be involved, you know, they want more involvement in schools. How can we get the community involved more? You'll see that that is is uh throughout this document, working on partnering with local organizations and and getting different folks in. Um when it talks about real-world uh learning is a focus area too under academic achievement, even with the community members, we're looking at. Bringing more community members in as guest speakers, mentors and and career advisors as we work with kids, just trying to bring more people in. You can see what we're talking about with parents, like for this example, focus area two. Um we heard from parents, they want more resources related to post-secondary planning. Now, not college planning, but post-secondary planning. So what 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 is there, um what is there for my child after, after twelfth grade? And so working on 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 some of those different components as you work through, you can see the well, the well-being pieces. Mental hea- mental health uh components were a big piece of what we heard from the community. Um and wanting to make sure that we continue to build upon a lot of the successes we've had uh with our mental health programming in the district and um. And expanded mental health services and and co-located services. Um. We're also looking for different ways that we can collaborate with different partners in the community uh to uh work on mental health campaigns and and things along those lines. You can also see the positive school climate. We're also wanting to take, if you go to Focus Area Two, a proactive approach to uh mental health. Because we know that um you know, with with our kids, with our with our staff, or our parents and staff, it's it's important that. Um you know, we can do some things on the front, on the front end of this, of this, which is encouraging positive behavior. That's the PBIS things that we've been working on and want to continue to keep going. Um we want to continue to have students take leadership roles and and work through those things. And then continue our employee recognition and and wellness uh initiatives. And you know, we've had a lot of different wellness initiatives. We've had. Mental health wellness initiatives, we've had financial wellness initiatives with our employees. Um we've done health, you know, wellness initiatives and so really trying to look at our employees. Well-rounded as well. You'll see that we have. You'll see that we have an entire pillar dedic- dedicated to partnerships. And, and family engagement and what we're, what we're trying to do with that, primarily focusing on parents and family, our staff and our, in our communities. Uh, some of this, uh, some of the components are backloaded a little bit, are gonna start in year two of the, of the uh strategic plan. Just because we, we are working through and finalizing some things as it relates on the academic side of the house that really we're, we're in the process. There's only so much bandwidth that everybody has to work through some of this stuff. And then as you get into operations, this is an area in our last strategic plan that we just didn't, we didn't cover. It, it just didn't have a, it just didn't have a, a home. And so it really is talking about resource equity and infrastructure, you know, how are we making sure that um that all of our students and staff have, you know, access to the efficient and uh, uh, secure and well-managed systems, you know, as we work through that, you heard Amanda talk today, you've, you heard Dustin talk, you've heard other Tracy talk today. There are so many other things uh that go into school than just the teacher standing in front of the classroom and uh, and working with kids. And so a lot of that, a lot of those pieces related to operations, as I talk about with our leadership team is a lot of people don't realize we do those things until they don't go well. So uh, nobody thinks about the two hundred wireless access points that have to be up in our building in order for everybody to connect to the internet. And uh, if all of a sudden the internet's down, uh, people hear about it. And I will say, I've never been in a district that has such a high rate of uptime. I mean, we're rarely down, knock on wood, now I say that. Um, but uh, you know, it, it takes a lot of moving pieces, you know, to keep those things up. And so I think that's, that's an important piece. Um, and as we're continue to uh map out our district finances and operations, we want to make sure we're continuing to provide clear and transparent information. Uh, that's in that, that kind of that focus area too, to make sure that we're not just um making connections with industry connections, but also making sure that we're letting people know what is going on and what do we have going on. Um, the neat thing is, you saw from Dustin, I think in the past, we've done a uh, uh rental hours, like how many hours our facilities have been rented. And we could probably get that information for you, but it's, it's, it's thousands and thousands of hours the community is using our, our facilities. And it's great. And we want them to use it because they're the ones that have paid the bill for them. So um, this is our, this is our roadmap over the next five years of how we plan to build on all the successes you've heard about all summer long with the individual reports. And also where we're going in, in, into the future. So I'd welcome any questions board members have or any comments.
Any questions and comments? Uh, I, I would just say that I, this is, in my years of paying attention, this strategic plan is uh is very well thought out or well put together, very user-friendly, something that I think uh the public could uh understand and appreciate as well. Um, so great job Tracy and your team and Brian?
Sorry.
No, 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 no.
Were you finished, Mr. President?
Of course, thank you.
Um, I, I really appreciate this too. I'm, I've, I've left years paying attention than, than Bob over here, but, but I, I really appreciate the acknowledgement that we can't, can't do everything. And, and zeroing in on focus areas. One question I have is, did you talk at all about measuring um, these focus areas and, and could you say a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. And so what, what happens is, um, so when we have these focus areas, so um, and we'll be talking about this a little bit later, but uh, we set our district goals for the year, department goals, building goals, all get tied back to what are the initiatives within the strategic plan. Once we do that, once those goals are set, we create what's called a scorecard action plan. So it has uh measurable um outcomes. So we have baseline data and um, and also it has uh different milestone points, four milestone points throughout the course of the year so that we can figure, you know, they don't just become words on a wall. We're actually getting these things done. Um, and uh, that's how we track the progress towards all of these things and, and continue to work, continue to work towards it. So what, wait, the way this will work and the way we have been working for a while is if a new initiative can't tie back to the strategic plan, then we're probably not doing it. And if we can't measure it, we're not, we're not doing it. There has to be an outcome. And one of the biggest shifts we've had over the last probably five to seven years is we've moved away from process goals to outcome-based goals. So uh, you know, back in the day, it used to be implement, you know, it might have been enough to just say implement CK, CKLA, the new reading curriculum. Now, that's, that's just the process. The, the actual goal is we want to see literacy, uh, you know, student achievement and literacy improved by this many points. The process to get there is implementing CKLA to do that. And so it's definitely more an outcomes-based model. Um, and the team has done phenomenal job. And so I'll be uh going over some of those things with you guys as well. So you'll be able to see examples of what those strategic plans look like, or those uh scorecard action plans look like for each of the years.
Molly?
Sorry. Um, so following up on, so we're, the public will see this.
Mm-hmm.
We talk about measurement.
Yep.
Will we follow up with measurements as we're going along to show how, you know, these all fall into these areas?
Yeah, so I, I believe, you know, the best way that we can do this is, is potentially every year, uh, at the end of the year, we'll do a report out, this is what we've accomplished towards the strategic plan. The reason why they have those weird initials uh by everything, you know, it says like EE two dash A or, or uh those things. It's so that we can tie everything we're doing back to those pieces on the strategic plan. And so uh, yes, I wouldn't, I would envision that we would be then doing kind of tying everything back with our um a report out usually in August or September on both the district goals, but also this is the progress we're making at this point in this plan. Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I also want to compliment how user-friendly this is. I think oftentimes you look at a strategic plan and you think you can't even really follow the plan, let alone follow how it's gonna, how the outcomes are gonna come out. Um, and then also I want to compliment the fact that I think every single area of this comes from our community conversation. And as I sat through all of those sessions, I thought, oh my, there's so many ideas. How can this possibly be put into one document? And you have done it. So it looks excellent.
Yeah, it's, it, it, you know, it was a lot of work. Um, and the team did a good job over the course of this year. Uh, this past school year, putting this together and taking the feedback from the uh community conversations last spring. And the community put a lot of time in it because we had over a hundred fifty people with us for three nights and four hours each time. And, and that was a lot of work, but we wanted to make sure that people knew that we weren't just getting them together just because to say we did it. It was actually gonna drive the, the direction of the district and that's, that's what it did. So.
Okay, that brings us to the end of reports. Moving on to topics for discussion and our possible action.
We do have, we do have one, one more report left, construction update.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Well, I just want to give, just want to give an update uh as we get closer to school, where we're at with things. Um, I know as people drive by buildings, they go, there's just no way, these are gonna be ready. And uh, you know, we've been working with uh, we've been working with our contractor. Um, and we, we do feel like we're in a pretty good spot uh with the buildings. Um, as we uh kind of work our way through North Hudson, what you see up there, that's the new main entrance. Uh, this was pictures from Friday. Uh, it looks, it looks different even today. It's Monday because they worked over the weekend. Uh, so if you were to drive by, it would look a lot, it would look a lot different. They're definitely making progress. In North Hudson, we believe that just about every part of the building will be done on the first day of school. Uh, we may be eating lunch in the old cafeteria to start, uh, which isn't the end of the world. Um, and the, the main office will be ready, but the principal's offices, uh, you know, might not be ready. But again, that'll be within about a week or so. Uh, the rest of the building is in really good shape. Again, it wouldn't be a construction report without a picture of bathrooms. Um, you can start to see, this is the cafeteria space. Um, ceilings are, you know, they're getting drywall softens in, ceiling's going in. You can start to see the windows that have been cut in and, and the light coming in. But now, if you go to the next one, you can see this is what it looks like now down the hallways at North Hudson. Really some neat spaces. I don't know if you can make it a little bigger, Tim. Um, but uh, the, the spaces have really uh, really turned out really nice and, and uh, it will be very similar in, in some of the other buildings. Um, you can see some of the classrooms, the last couple of classrooms that are finishing out. Um, they need uh ceiling tile and carpeting. Uh, it looks like, God, they got a long way to go here. This is, you know, there's probably about six to eight hours left in this room. I mean, it's just not, not much time. Uh, it finishes as we go through. The side of the building, uh, that's where the new windows for the, the um, uh cafeteria are. Uh, there's actually, I think, uh, they've, they should have glass in these windows by the end of the day tomorrow. Um, so uh, they're definitely moving along. It looks a lot different. Uh, the front of the building. Uh, I go down one more. There are glass. You can see they started putting the glass and there are glass in, in, in these windows. And the brick has been patched in. And again, these are pictures that just took Friday. Uh, you keep working your way down. Uh, this is a changing room, uh, family style uh bathroom that we have uh, for the gymnastics to use. So it has, it's a separate, its own kind of se- separate family-style bathroom that has a shower and things like that. Um, we didn't do full locker rooms for the gymnastics space just because uh kids don't use them as much as they used to. But we do have at least one space that if somebody would like to shower after practice and things like that, that they have that space available, but it's a private bathroom. Uh, you're going to EP Rock. Um, the main entrance, EP Rock from the outside, uh, is definitely looking uh pretty good. Sidewalks are in, uh, asphalt is going to be in, uh, start going in the end of this week. Um, the same thing with North Hudson. So it will look drastically different. All the construction fencing came down today. Uh, then Dustin and his team are gonna go and we'll start getting everything kind of put back together. Um, uh, grass-wise and things like that. Uh, the main office uh is ready for paint. Um, actually, they worked through the weekend. Uh, it actually has started to get paint on the walls. That's the new main office controlled entrance area. Um, this next picture is actually out in front of the media center. Um, they're just, they're about ready to get ceilings in. Again, they worked all weekend. This is drywalled now, uh, where it wasn't drywalled when they took this picture on Friday. Um, you start to see the tile go in, in the um cafeteria. So the cafeteria space is about, uh, is about done. That will be ready for the start of school. Uh, you can keep going down. Um, these are uh classroom, this is a classroom uh bathroom space uh related, you know, off of a, it might be a four K or a kindergarten room. Uh, so flooring's in, they just gotta put the fixtures in paint. Uh, we go into the middle school. The middle school is in really good shape. You start to see um, the flooring has gone down in the hallways. The lights are in, lockers are in. We did have an issue uh last Tuesday, a little bit of a setback. Um, we had a worker that was working on the sprinkler system that uh thought there wasn't water in the system and opened up a five-inch valve and dumped a few thousand gallons of water in the second floor of the building. Uh, so that had to be mitigated and um and all, all of it, you know, stuff pulled out and things like that. Not exactly what you're wanting to deal with when you're trying to crunch to get everything done. Uh, but we're in a really good spot. Um, and a big thank you to Dustin and Bonnie and their teams. Uh, we had a lot of custodial help to help the construction crews just to, just to get things going. Uh, you can see the wall uh going in the media center. This is actually now painted and has glass in it. So this was taken on Friday and now it's, it's just a, a different space. Um, over by the gym entrance, uh, people say, why are we messing with that? If you ever remember going into that space, uh, they had a roof that slanted forward. The gutters never worked, so that meant the sidewalks were always full of ice, especially in the spring and uh in the fall. So that got a flat roof with internal drains. Uh, it's a, it was definitely a safety issue, maintenance issue. Uh, so that will be done by the time we start. Um, I think what you're seeing, that's district office space, uh, which is actually, I think they painted, started painting. That will not be ready until into September. Um, then we told them focus on everything else and not that space. And so that's, that's where they've spent their time. Uh, you start to see ceilings are going in by the multipurpose rooms. Um, and you can keep going down. You start to see the walls being painted with that uh kind of neat design on the, the big wall. It's actually all done. Uh, it's really kind of a neat space. Uh, when people go in there, they're, it's, it's definitely um transformed that space and, you know, a lot of it's just paint and flooring. It's not a, uh, it didn't, didn't get a tremendous amount of investment, but it, it will look very, very nice when it's done. So we're feeling like we're in a pretty good spot. There are parts of EP Rock that won't be done until uh probably about the tenth of September. Uh, but we have enough extra rooms on hand to uh be able to move some people into those spaces. Uh, but it will be kind of a race to the end. Teachers will be able to get into their classrooms next week. Um, and although the hallways won't be done, they'll be able to set up their classrooms and get those things done uh in the buildings and get those rolling. And then uh, it should be all ready. All the buildings will be ready for their open houses. So, questions?
Molly?
Dr. Elliott, thank you for all the um information. The one question I have is with um it running behind and um construction going on over the weekends. How are we with the budget and does this eat up contingency or is this just part of the job that they are contracted to do?
Um, some of it is just part of the job they're contracted to do. They haven't expect, you know, they knew the timeline. So some of the, you know, a lot of the bidders built overtime into their bids because they knew they, just about every school project ends like this. Uh, um, they're always a race in, in August. Um, contingency, you know, we're sitting in a, in a reasonably good spot. We still have a few hundred thousand dollars left in contingency, which is great considering what the point we're at right now. Um, and you know, we were able to uh get um, it's, as opposed to just burning through contingency, we've been pretty diligent about it. And so we've been able to get some uh increased value uh for folks uh in, in the project. Um, but it's, it, it is, make no mistake, it is a huge uh time-consuming uh piece for Bonnie, for Dustin, myself right now. It, so it is a very important piece because if the buildings aren't ready, we can't start school. So I mean, it's, it is a, a high priority. Uh, we're meeting daily at this point. Um, as, as I think, um, I made three different trips to North Hudson today. Um, for different things that came up, uh, two trips to EP Rock and one to the middle school. So um Bonnie made at least two or three trips to different places. Dustin's all over. I mean, it's just, it's a, on top of everything else, we're trying to get done to start school. Um, but uh, I think we're, you know, I think we're in a good spot. And I think when it's all said and done, the community's gonna have buildings they can really be proud of. Kids are gonna have wonderful learning spaces. Teachers are gonna have great resources at their disposal. Um, so it will, it will be things that I think everybody can be proud of. And that, you know, we, all indications at this point look like we will be bringing this in under budget. So.
I just uh, can echo the, the amount, the amount of effort and the time involved in this from Nick, from Bonnie and uh from Dustin and all the staff. This has been a huge pull and uh, in some ways, you know, you'd have to say, you know, a disappointment. It's a challenge. This is, we're putting our staff through a lot. We're putting our students through some. Um, but I think the end result is, is just gonna be awesome from what I've seen. Um, but to call out the uh, the dedication, um, Nick and Bonnie have, have done, you know, holding uh, holding our contractors, uh, the constant communication. The number of hours they spend out on those sites, it's not, you know, doesn't show up anywhere except uh in the finished product. And uh, so thank you very much. Anybody else? Good. Maybe I forgot to, I was trying to skip over that one just to save Nick one last report on it, but uh, um, but uh, so moving on to topics and possible action. Anybody want to help us, help us out with the motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety-three cents.
Do I have a second? Second by Aaron? And all those in favor, say hi. Hi. All those opposed, say no. Nate. Um, just hearing none. Wish it passes. Anything from Andrea? Any retirements or anything this time? No. Um, let's see. Moving on uh for Nick with the uh fall regional meeting of the Wasby.
Yep. Uh, so just to give you a heads up, the uh Wasby regional, fall regional meetings for our area is Tuesday, October twenty eighth. Is that right, Tim? That's the top there? Um, and it's, I don't know if it's, is it at, is it, uh, it's in Eau Claire this year. So it's been, I think it's been nominating past years. Um, so it's in Eau Claire. Um, and uh, you know, just they give a legislative update. They'll have their executive director's report. Um, and uh, it looks like they're gonna be, uh, they do usually a short presentation, uh, kind of a short board learning opportunity. Uh, so if you're wanting to be, to go to that, um, typically we send at least a few people to that. Um, please email Tim and myself and we'll get you registered uh and we'll work through the, the carpooling to do that. So um, again, just wanted to get it on people's radar that it's Tuesday, October twenty eighth in Eau Claire. So. And I think Bob, you have some.
Yes, some, some great news, yeah. Uh, with, with Jamie. Yeah, some, some great news. Yeah. Uh, with, with Jamie, uh, retiring off the board, uh, he was on the policies and resolutions committee for, for, uh, for Wasby and, um, because he is no longer available, uh, Mr. Totenhagen from River Falls, the committee chair has reached out to me to, uh, bribe me into trying to continue Jamie's legacy. So I have accepted that. I think it's important that we have someone from our district, um, as part of that resolution and policy committee. Uh, and just from meeting to, you know, a few times, but meeting other, other people from the state and hearing those concerns and what's on other districts, you know, mind and what they're looking for and how that meshes or does not mesh with, with what we're looking at. So I, uh, happily look forward to being on that committee. Uh, after, moving on, uh, we have a certified staff handbook with Andrea.
Yes. So as we discussed at the work session in July, these, this is our traditional review of our certified staff handbook. And this is for the 25, 26 school year. And so what you see here with this document is the redlined version has not changed since the work session. So I won't go through all the details, but again, it's primarily, um, updating nothing that's substantive. But instead, uh, updating names and some language issues. We are embedding within this document, the previously board approved, uh, modifications to our layoff language. Um, that was approved last winter by the board and now it's reflected in this new handbook. So that'll show up as a redlined. It looks like it's new, but it's really not. Um, uh, because you'd already approved it. So, uh, nothing earth shattering when it comes to this handbook and the recommendation to move forward with the redline version. We then would communicate it out to all of our certified staff.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, I would. Um, do I have a motion to approve staff handbook?
So moved.
Second from Brian. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. It is approved. Moving on to the support staff handbook.
Similar analysis here where it's just an update primarily dates and some like the insurance language is updated, but it has not changed from the recommendation that we, uh, made at the, uh, work session. So the same modifications as reflected in the redline document.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate.
I move to, uh, I move to approve.
Do I have a second? Second from Erin?
I move to.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion approves or motion passes. And then we have Tara with second reading of, uh, update policy on school wellness.
It's actually.
Wait, is that, okay.
I guess Bonnie's.
That's a goof up by Tim, just so we have that on record.
Um, so this was, this is a second reading. Nothing has changed. Um, this is a wellness policy that needed to be updated based on our administrative review. We had the spring from DPI. Um, the main things was about nutrition promotion in the school as well as updating our nondiscrimination statement.
Mr. President, I move to approve the wellness policy number four fifty-eight.
Motion by Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes. Now we have second reading of, uh, parent and family engagement. Is that Bonnie?
This is me.
That is Nick.
It says Nick.
Oh, is that? No, family engagement.
Oh, oh, it says.
I'm just not gonna, I'll just, whoever is taking it, please just.
Yeah.
Come forward.
Uh, so we have the second reading. It's the same policy that you approved at the last, uh, at the last regular meeting, uh, first reading. This has to do with the act twenty, it, act twenty programs that were added to it. Um, and it's the language directly essentially from DPI, which is the, uh, act twenty parent notification requirements for universal screening and literacy assessments. So you can see that down at the bottom or at the end of the, uh, at the end of the policy. So the administration's recommendation is to approve the second reading of this, uh, of this policy.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the second reading of policy three, four, two, point, five, one.
Thank you, Molly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Megan. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes. And moving on to long-term facility planning and possible school closure. Is that right, Nick?
Possible school closure discussion.
Discussion.
Yes. Um, so what you have here is, and the board talked about this in the work session in, uh, July, is there's two different documents here. Uh, the long, the first document is the base staffing scenario. So basically it's the five different kind of options related to moving forward. Option one being, um, maintain six K five elementary schools. Uh, option two is to, uh, go to four K five elementary schools. Uh, option three would be to just close Willow River Elementary and have five K five elementary schools. Uh, option four would be to close, uh, both Willow and Holton and have two K two buildings and two, three, five buildings. Uh, so those are more great alike buildings. And option six would be to, uh, sorry, option five would be to just close, uh, Holton Elementary School. And so, um, you know, one of the questions that came up as it related to four K last time. And, uh, we believe that no matter what option you, you choose here, if you choose to keep all six buildings, um, eventually, not that you're making that decision, you know, tonight, or if you decide to close one or two buildings, we believe we'll be able to still maintain, uh, our in-house four K programming. The thing that becomes a little bit more of a challenge depending on, you know, what our numbers do is wrap care. You know, that, that, that wraparound care piece, um, depending on, on what building and what numbers look like. There are different options for that. There could be that certain buildings have additional classrooms to provide additional wrap care. Um, there's also the options that, uh, potentially, um, you know, there could be a s- a center, uh, centralized wrap care facility where, um, and when I say wrap care, it's, it's basically childcare for the parts of the day that aren't, uh, that aren't school four K. Um, so there, there are some options there. So in all of these options, we do have the ability to continue to, to provide our four K programming and maintain our relationships with our community partners that also do four K programming as well. Um, it's just a lot of it depends on the boundaries and where classrooms are and, and things along those lines as we move forward. So one of the other documents that you have that's, that's right below there, we felt it was important to put the folder that has all the background information that you guys went through, uh, in July. Um, you know, we have, uh, enrollment data in that folder. Um, so, uh, we have all of the, you know, different, uh, different pieces. We have, uh, enrollment studies that we've had done. His historic enrollment information, um, and, and those different pieces and then elementary, uh, class enrollments and things along those lines. Uh, also you have in the communications, uh, tab. Um, and again, not to go through everything, the labor, everything, but the long-term facility and budget planning communications. Tracy did a great job putting this together. You can see, uh, in this document, when we talked about either budget or, uh, or, you know, the need to potentially reduce our footprint in the district, basically since twenty twenty, twenty twenty, I think the last five years. Uh, and as a board, you guys have discussed it and what Tracy did is she linked the different, um, documents, whether it be needing referendums, whether it be, you know, potentially talking about needing to close school or talking about enrollment situations, things like that. But I think as a board, you've talked about it over a hundred times in the last five years. Uh, with staff, it has the different communications we've had with staff. Um, families, the different communications and then community where we've had these different communications. And so as you look at that document and people in the, um, uh, folks online or in the community can see exactly when these different communications happened, you know, we had over fifty communications with, we've talked about it over fifty times at different community, uh, settings. Uh, with families, uh, it's, you know, been almost sixty times. Uh, with staff, we've had conversations that we may need to address, you know, some things, uh, related to facilities, long-term planning slash, you know, the potential building closures over a hundred times. And like I said, as a board, uh, this has been on the docket, uh, over a hundred and twenty times, uh, with different things. Um, so we wanted to make sure that people could go to one location and say, hey, uh, have we ever talked about this or have we ever talked about that? Uh, and we say, well, at least for the last five years, this is our kind of running record of when we, we feel like we have, um, have addressed different areas, whether it be enrollment, facilities or budget areas as it ties to, um, long-term facility planning and those, and those different components there. Um, also in that folder, uh, facility information. So you have the old facility reports. Um, this was the ten-year facility plan and then also the architect's report. So you have the full document, which is twenty-four megs. So if somebody's really dying to read a very detailed report on their buildings, uh, there's I think three or four hundred pages there to dig into. Otherwise there's a more, um, six-page, more truncated, uh, summary of, you know, based on their assessments of our building by building about how much investment is needed, uh, in the buildings and in what, and in which years. Uh, that front main page kind of shows you, um, what they would anticipate if some of these things kind of get, you know, pushed out a few more years and things along those lines. Um, you also have in that, uh, folder and the community has it as well, you have the staffing information, which is the base staffing scenarios, um, and potential savings. You also have, um, the long-term potential savings related to, related to staffing, um, pieces and, and, and si- and overall savings over the course of ten years and twenty years. Part of the reason why we amortize it over twenty is if we were ever to borrow money, when we originally started looking at this was back when we're talking about going to referendum in twenty-two. Um, we borrow money over a twenty-year period. And so that's why, uh, we break it down that way. And then, um, you start to look at, uh, staff counts. People wanted to kind of know overall from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-five, uh, you know, wanted to make sure people understood, yes, we are, um, we are reducing, uh, staff. It's not, we're not waiting. You know, we have been reducing. Uh, we reduced about six percent of our certified staff, about a little over eight percent of our, our leadership staff in the district. Um, and actually it's about eleven or twelve percent of our support staff in the district, uh, over that, that, that time period. And so, um, people have access to that, um, to that information as well, uh, as we look at that. There's also a ratio report in there. So you can kind of see, um, the, again, the reduction in enrollment, but also the reduction in staff. So we're down about, we're down about six, almost seven percent of our enrollment since two thousand seventeen. We're down about eight percent administratively. Um, we're down about thirteen and a half percent with our, our support staff. Uh, we're down about five percent of our licensed staff as we look at that. Um, but overall total staff, we've cut, you know, almost nine percent of our, of our staff. So when sometimes people say you have to, you know, keep living with any means, we, we are trying our best. Um, but now there gets to be a points where it's really hard to not real efficient, you know, with, with some of the things that we've done. So that's the background information for the community. Megan, you had something?
Yeah, I just realized and maybe I'm not seeing it. Um, but I think it might be helpful if in this folder there were the most recent budget projections, if, if, if they were kept somewhere in here to just, I think that it's all, for me, it's always helpful context to keep looking at, okay, what is the deficit looking like, however many years out and of course that factors in to decision making.
Absolutely. And we can, we can definitely, um, we can definitely add, add that in and have a budget, have a budget tab. So, um, yeah, that, that's, that's not a problem at all.
Kate?
I, as I was looking in preparation for this meeting at all of this and have been through the last couple of years, um, I think that we should say that we've decided as a board to come to a decision by October. So I think it's important that we start kind of being productive and and in my, in my opinion, it would be to look today, to look at all of these options, all five, and look at which ones as a board do we think that we could whittle down so that we can start to move forward in some of the most realistic options that we might have. I don't know if other people, I know there's strong opinions on the two K two and two, three, five buildings within the board. I person, as my own opinion would be that keeping all of the buildings open is not an option for our district. I don't think we have the finances to do that. And I think that's been proven over and over by our, our budget projections. So that's my opinion on how we move forward today.
Okay. Erin?
Well, I just like for a process. So you guys have some type of process to go through this. So one of the things that you, you potentially could do is you could talk about each option, kind of weigh the pros and cons of each option as a board. And then at that point, somebody could make a motion on each option, uh, to either eliminate that option. And then, you know, if you had a motion and then you had a second, then you get more discussion about it. Um, and if it passes to eliminate it, then you would eliminate that option off of there. You're not, you're not closing buildings or anything like that. You're just saying, hey, we're trying to get down to options. So that way you guys actually have a, have a path to talk about each option, what you guys feel like the pros and cons are. And then there's some record that said, okay, you know, we voted six oh or, or whatever it is to eliminate that as an option to consider, you know, type of thing. So just a thought process, but go ahead, uh, Erin. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine. Um, thanks, Kate, for your comments on that. I, I do feel very strongly for the record on that. Two K and, um, three, five buildings. I'm not a fan of that, um, model for several reasons. We did talk about that in the previous, um, board session. Uh, my main concern, I just wanted to address it. So it's on record here. Um, that it loses generational experiences and there is a serious need for role models from kids that are younger to older, um, and how they behave. That is a very large concern of not losing that. And we just spent a lot of time listening, um, at the last session of all the wins that are happening in the elementary schools in the district, um, with the, the reading guided reading programs and helping with math and, and you name it. It was, it was phenomenal to hear how those older kids are really stepping in and, and finding joy in helping the younger kids and how much the kids all around enjoy that. Um, um, along with in this discussion, being as sensitive as we can about this. Um, it sounds really horrific, um, to talk about schools closing. And I personally think as a, I mean, just as a parent with multiple kids and multiple grades, probably about the most horrific thing you could say to me right now would be like, oh, hey, by the way, we might close this school and now your kids are gonna go to separate schools now on top of it. I, I just wanna, I wanna say that because I, I just don't want to see that happen. There's enough that's going on here in the district. Um, to just, I would, I would like to actually make a motion tonight if now is appropriate to remove that as an option.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, just because of the way my brain works, which can be rather linear at times. Um, so I'm not saying whether or not to make the motion now, but it would be helpful for me in framing the discussion if you talked a little bit through the timeline of when we, I mean, you said we had to make a decision by October, but then what are the other decisions that we need to make? And I know there's a memo and I did read it, but that helps ground me in like where everything's going.
I did have a couple of other questions. So I didn't mean to go on a tangent down that road. Um, if I can just, before you answer that question, um, is there a place in this where it would say how many kids would be in the classrooms, like a projected model to look at how many kids, if we narrowed down to four schools, five schools, what that looks like for classroom sizes?
We, we wouldn't change our class size guidelines.
Okay.
So, um, now if you were used to going to a school that had thirteen in a class.
Sure.
You're not gonna have thirteen. I mean, the, the whole point of doing this is to get to more, uh, within our class size guidelines. Um, so, yeah, we wouldn't be changing them. Uh, I can tell you that the, the models were built around. So for exam- example, we took, uh, so I took, okay, if we had three hundred element, um, kindergartners, divided that by, uh, twenty-two is our class size guideline. Uh, then that gave me how many sections. And if it came out to be, let's say thirteen point one sections, we called it fourteen. We automatically rounded it up for space. Um, and so, you know, that's kind of how it was, how it was set up. So there's, there's a little bit of buffer in there. Um, but I couldn't tell you exactly until you re-boundary exactly what the class sizes would be until you get to that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I follow up just quickly on that point?
Um.
Could you talk a little bit about how full our, our elementary schools are today versus under a, a four school model, a five school model? Um, and also if possible, the middle school and high school. I don't know. I know, I know we're not going into those buildings at all in this discussion, but.
Yep. Absolutely. So, um, at the very bottom of the first document that is linked, the long-term facility planning, uh, possible school closure. Uh, at the very bottom, uh, if you go down, Tim, and you can. uh, at the very bottom, uh, if you go down to, and you can kind of zoom in there a little bit, um, what you'll see is for each of the different options, what the capacity is and what the um, what's needed, and then what the percent of capacity we would be. And so the the tough thing about capacity is people always say, well, what is, you know, what is capacity of the building? And what we often say is, tell us what you want the program to look like in the building, and we can tell you what the capacity of the building is. So if all of a sudden you take regular classrooms offline because it's gonna have other specialized programming in it, then all of a sudden the capacity of the building goes down, right? Uh, also, the difference is, for example, if um, you raise class size guidelines by one student per class, let's say it it goes eighteen to uh twenty, from eighteen twenty-two to eighteen to twenty-three, let's say at the elementary, uh, K two, and then from twenty-two to twenty-seven to twenty-two to twenty-eight. Now, all of a sudden, you've just increased our elementary uh capacity by a hundred. So it's, you know, because now obviously, you know, you've said you could put an extra student in every classroom, so now the capacity is bigger, right? And so that's why capacity is, is, we have what we used when we did the elementary rebounding in two thousand eighteen. And that's where we set the numbers at, you know, four-section building, both, uh, the four-section buildings are about five eighty-eight, I think somewhere around there. Um, and then the uh, uh Willow and uh North were set at three-section buildings, and then Holton was set as a two-section building. So they have lesser uh capacity. When we look at, based on those numbers, we say that currently, if we kept current class size guidelines and based on the number of classrooms we have, we'd say we have enough seats in our current six buildings for two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight kids. You know, it's give, you know, give or take. Um, we currently have, now Andrea gave a different number from July because we gained some kids, which was a nice uh, nice thing to have. Um, but at nineteen twenty-nine, so nineteen hundred twenty-nine elementary kids, you know, our capacity is, we're running about sixty-five percent capacity. So we're much, much less capacity. Uh, when you start to look at these other options, when you start to take buildings offline, if you take both buildings offline, it drops our capacity from nineteen, or from twenty-nine eighty-eight to twenty-two oh five. And all of a sudden, you know, we're running at a much, a much higher capacity. Um, you know, percentage, we're at eighty-seven and a half percent. If you take one building offline, depending on which one you take off, because Willow is obviously bigger than than Holton, um, it changes the capacity to either um, a twenty-five hundred student capacity or a twenty-seven hundred student capacity. And so on the bottom there, you can kind of see what is the percent, you know, as you, as you look at it. And and how that kind of shakes out. You have to remember, these are of of K, uh, four, I'm sorry, of K five rooms. So we do have buildings that have additional rooms uh that we could use for things like four K, that we can use for things like uh special education and things like that. And so sometimes people will say, well, if you keep four K in there, won't that put you past the capacity? No, that's not exactly the case. So we count, like, for example, we count North Hudson as a three-section building, eighteen classrooms for K five, okay? But it actually has nineteen classrooms. So there's a, there's a extra classroom at North Hudson that could be used as a four K room. Um, and so not, not part of these, not part of these numbers as we go through it. Same thing at Rivercrest, we have some of those, uh, we have that, basically that situation going on in all of our elementarys to some extent.
But I think it is important to note to Aaron's point that for the community, there are people in the community that think that we're shrinking schools, so all class sizes are going up. And that is just not the case, never was part of the plan. And, you know, and it's just a, you know, a misunderstanding out there. You know, and I'm not saying it was missed, you get it, and but uh, um, that that is, you know, challenges we have. Uh, I wanted to include some information that was sent to me from Maria, and I will share that with all board members too as well, but uh, um, you know, she is supportive of of uh making a decision by October twenty twenty-five. She would love to see uh, you know, minimum of, minimum of one, but hopefully two community sessions. Uh, and then she goes into the facilitation of that because we want to avoid some of the just open-ended, you know, kind of pass a mic session kind of thing. So uh, like we've, we've kind of done in the past. Um, her her position, and she gives some information on the, on the uh, the K two, K three, five structure. She, her, her instinct would, or her like would be to see um, three, moving three with three, forward to three options to the community. One would be no closing, keeping all six elementaries, and that's basically an informational push, you know, because why we can, or why we can't, you know, to to Kate's point.
Can you start over that part, Bob? I didn't follow.
Uh, just um, that, uh, she'd like to see us move forward, not necessarily tonight, but with three options to the public um, for discussion. And one would be no closing. And and understanding that financially, we can't do that. But, you know, just communication. Um, second one would be closing two elementaries, keep the five case, or K five structure. And the third was closing two elementaries uh, keeping or moving to a K two, three, five. And she gives information on just the different pros and cons of that, uh, of that structure. Um, but, and I talked to her personally, and she was like, we, she led the, one of the the boundary committee. So she's been through this, and she understands the 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 negative effect of having, you know, closing one school, rebounding, closing another school. And I know Nick has talked about, there's ways we could potentially do it to reboundary where it wouldn't be as big in, big of an effect, closing one school and then another later. But I just thought I would mention that. So I wanted her information, I wanted her thoughts heard.
Mister President, um, thank you for sharing that. And I just wanted to kind of go back to the capacity and the uh, class size question. And I think, you know, it came up tonight with with uh Rivercrest now having two was it Rivercrest now? Two classes um that are a little bit above the, our district guidelines. And then we had the issue at Hudson Prairie. And so I think, you know, there's a lot of green, and then there's a little bit of red. And it's, we can't afford to just add teachers when it goes over. Um, and so I think, I feel like the administration and this board has shown that, well, I have, I do not have a desire to see class sizes increase, which is the vibe I've gotten uh from our other discussions. Um, so I just want, that's, that's not part of the consideration in my mind is to increase elementary class sizes. And we also heard from the community conversation, and I haven't heard anybody say like, yeah, let's just put like forty kindergartners in a room and see what happens, right? Like, that's not what anyone's looking to do. Um.
Melli?
I have a question for Dr. Rolet. Um, as far as the percent capacity that we're talking about, um, I know you said it depends on what kind of education you want to deliver for capacity. So should, so if you're looking at like the options that have the eighty-seven point four eight percent capacity, so basically getting down to four schools, so we have space for less than three hundred additional students, is that enough space? I mean, it, what's your opinion?
Um, I, I, I just, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball with it. I mean, I, I think, um, you know, one of the things in the enrollment information that you've got was, you know, we're down almost five hundred elementary-age kids in the last ten years, um, with no trend that says it's going the other direction. Um, you know, when we talk about, yes, we're up some kids uh from July to now, that's, it's, it's positive to not be down from July to now, but the real likelihood uh of what our enrollment will be when day one uh happens is there will be kids that we are currently counting on showing up on the first day of school that won't come. Because one of the things that usually happens is the kids that we, that are new, that are coming in, that are ads, usually those parents are the ones that are calling and saying, hey, I need to get my kid enrolled for school. Uh, but sometimes when people move away, especially over the summer, they uh, they enroll their kid in their new school, but they rarely um, tell, you know, tell the school it's leaving. And so we get some of that through records requests and things like that from the, from the city schools. But um, it, it is rare for us to start, uh, you know, especially like the middle school and high school and have more kids after we start than what we were counting on having. Usually fewer kids show up the first day. Um, as far as the, you know, the total number, one of, one of the concerns is always, you know, if you eliminate too much capacity, could you potentially need to have to add capacity back if we started to have growth? Absolutely. I mean, that's, there's, there's, that's a very real possibility. I will tell you that all of the remaining buildings of the four, uh, at least three of the four buildings, uh, Rivercrest, North and EP Rock can all be added on to relatively easily without a referendum or things like that, if all of a sudden you need to add some classrooms. But you have to understand, in order for us to get to that point, um, we're talking about a lot. We, we'd have to have a lot of growth. Um, EP Rock and Hudson Prairie, before we opened Rivercrest, had over six hundred thirty kids in each of those two buildings. Um, we, we wouldn't go, we, we don't even say that's their capacity. We say their capacity is actually fifty fewer than that. Um, so, yeah, I mean, we try to operate, we prefer to operate between eighty and ninety percent capacity because that means we're the, our most efficient. And we can ebb and flow with neighborhood changes, you know, the, the best we can. Um, but I, you know, I, I can't uh, I can't guarantee you that, you know, five years from now, if all of a sudden we have, you know, some more development that comes on, that the board might not have to add a couple classrooms. Now, I will tell you that if you close a building or or two buildings, you're gonna see up there annually about what the savings is. Um, to add a handful of classrooms uh is probably less than one year's worth of those savings. So that's where you got to start to look at that and go, okay, if five years from now we need to do this, um, and you did happen to close two, uh, over those five years, you may have saved, you know, sixteen million dollars in the process. You definitely are not gonna spend sixteen million dollars adding a couple classrooms on an elementary school. Just a thought process.
Yes, Erin.
Um, Nick, I don't know if you can talk to this, but I'm pretty sure Bob could or myself a little bit. Um, the Economic Development Corporation put out that housing study, and I think it would be really helpful for anyone who um, is listening or here, if they are questioning um, the um, housing structure, the enrollment studies that you are referring to, to find it really helpful to just look at what the EDC has been doing. Um, and I think there's actually some tour dates still available for people to attend. It's very interesting information, very helpful information. I don't know if all board members have had an opportunity to go. Molly.
Um, but I haven't gotten there, but I've heard it's really good.
But it's, it, it was really helpful to go because you kind of sit here, you're like, okay, while people are leaving the district and everybody, you know, has this idea. I am one of those people that I have an idea of why people might leave the district, right? Um, and everybody here can speak to that on their own, whatever, however they feel affected by that. But um, the um, population study is, it's very real, and we're not growing in Hudson. We have very expensive homes, and we have um, uh, it's hard for new families to come in here and to be able to afford them. So that's why they're looking at many affordable housing options. But I just wanted to put that in there.
That's, that's a great point. And uh, could we include the W E D C uh information on our on our site as well as a, um, cause absolutely, I encourage anybody to look up that on on the web or or see one of the uh meetings that are still left. Um, what's that?
I just had it.
Can I, can I finish, please?
I didn't know.
This time I'm calling you. Um, I will say that, you know, I, I had a friend that we drove, we drove all over the area looking at lots and things. That was, was, he's hoping to move it to this area. And, you know, the ones up by Holton, north of Big Guys Barbecue, you know, they're all three acres. Again, they're all three acres. Ones off McCutcheon, right next to an industrial building, are one acres, and they start at two hundred thousand. And and, you know, a finished home is no, starts at six hundred thousand. So those are one-acre lots. So it, it's, it is just very difficult. Um, but uh, good, good point, Erin, about that, that study. It is just more reinforcement. Brian?
I just wanted to share a stat from, from that housing study. I, I went to the same presentation you did, Bob, that I There we go. I wanted to share a stat from that um, presentation that I just found striking, that, that St. Croix County is growing. According to that, that study, like something like one percent per year, something like that. But what was striking about it is every population group, except those over sixty-five years old, is shrinking and projected to shrink in our county, um, which is really just um, evidence of what we're seeing in our schools. What we've seen in our, you know, five hundred kids since twenty fourteen aren't in our elementary schools. Um, and is, is, is a, is a stats that's evident of, of, you know, kind of the tough questions that, that we have to deal with today.
Mister President?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to sort of piggyback off that, and from my understanding, the state of Wisconsin doesn't look much different overall. We're one of the fastest aging states, I think. Not that we grow older faster. We, we stay younger longer as an individual. But there's just fewer young people in our state as people live longer too. So um, there are things about Hudson that make it difficult, but it's also like people just aren't having as many kids anymore. Or people are leaving Wisconsin altogether, which huge mistake in my opinion.
Yeah, it's, it's no coincidence that the companies that build and manage assisted living facilities are zeroing in on St. Croix County. And it's because they're, they're looking five, ten, fifteen years down the road, the need. And uh, yeah, it's sobering. Any other questions or concerns? Oh, well, we have a motion that's.
I was gonna perhaps suggest that we do what Nick had said, is go through each option, discuss it as a board. And then if there's a motion, we can go through that. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
And just, and and going back to your original, you asked about the timeline, and we talked about the memo that came out in July. So the, the memo that was put together was in response to the board saying, if we wanted to make a decision and we wanted a change for the fall of twenty-six, you asked me to put together a timeline of when you would need some milestone dates. And so uh, so this wasn't, I just want to reiterate, it wasn't a, you know, administration coming out and saying, okay, we're gonna close things by twenty-six or things like that. It was just, people wanted to know, if there was gonna be a change for twenty-six, what does that look like? And what, what are all the different pieces? So decision on school closures, i- if they want, if, if you want to have a change for fall of twenty-six, our most ideal situation is a decision's made in Oc- by October of twenty-five. And some people say, why does it have to be so early? And the biggest reason is, there's a lot of things that have to happen once there's a decision made. Um, there's a lot fewer things that have to happen if you choose to keep all six buildings open because we, you know, we don't have to do some of these things. Um, but uh, one of the first things that'll happen is when the board decides to make a decision, whether they want to keep them open or or close buildings or close two or close one, is then we go into a boundary adjustment mode, and that would basically start um, with working with a consultant, basically as soon after the board would make a decision on what they wanted to do, to start looking at what do boundaries look like. Um, and that, that situation, that needs to happen by February. So the board would actually have to set the boundaries for the following school year by February, uh, is what we gave as a date. And so part of what would happen from basically October to February was, we'd be working with the uh, the consultants to put together. They basically have to um, you know, map where all of our kids are in the entire district, where they think growth's gonna happen, where they think our kid things are gonna happen, and start to come up with sample boundaries. We would then uh have two to three options of boundaries uh, proposals for the community to get feedback on, for the board to ride feedback. And that process all kind of happens in, by January, February. February is important because then once February happens, we have to go through a staffing uh consideration, which is in the spring of twenty-six. We try to let staff know, if you choose uh to close a building, you know, part of the reason why there are savings is because we have fewer staff members that are working, you know, it is a reduction in force. Um, and so we want to make sure that we have plenty of time to let people know that if, if there are going to be some reductions in force, what does that look like? We also have to reassign the building so we know um, how many sections we need in each of the buildings. And we need to also be in compliance with our contractual obligations and our HR timelines, state obligations, things like that, which come up very quickly in April. Then what happens also after boundaries are set is we basically have to reroute the entire school district. So that means, you know, the thirty-six or so bus routes that we have in the school district have to start over from scratch, and we have to start figuring out what's the best way to pick up all of the kids that are going to be bused to school, and how do we make that work? have to start over from scratch and we have to start figuring out what's the best way to pick up all of the kids that are going to be bused to school and how do we make that work within the timeframe that we have. And so there's a lot of moving parts so that by the time we get to the end of the school year, uh, going into summer, families know where their kids are going to school, staff know where they're working, and transportation wise, we know exactly kind of what, what direction we're heading transportation wise going into the summer, so that we're not waiting until the very end. And so that's kind of our best, our best case scenario. Could you condense that timeline? Sure. It makes it a lot more difficult. And puts a lot more stress on the system. Uh, could you also say, could you do it for a, a, a date of fall of twenty-seven instead of twenty-six? Sure. You can do that as well. I mean, you, there's a variety of things you can do and a variety of different options that you can do. So that's kind of the timeline and, and where we came up with the dates and why they are what they are.
Mr. President? Just one more thing, maybe, probably. With the staffing considerations, uh, Nick or Andrea, could you talk a little bit to, you know, obviously losing certified staff, losing, um, other sta- staff, it's a hard idea to think about. How, what the average attrition retirement is versus like, is it going to be for sure nineteen point seven eight certified staff are getting laid off? Or do you know what I'm saying?
I do. And I think, uh, for example, right now, we just hired about thirty-five new teachers going into the school year. And so, um, granted, that's across K-12. But we also, um, have, I think about what eighteen retirements last year of certified staff. So between retirements and normal attrition, it's likely, um, there's a potential. Don't want to commit to it, but the, I mean, there would definitely be potential that it wouldn't be additional layoffs. But we also modified our layoff language this past spring to look at if this was something in the future, we have some more K-12 positions. So then we really prioritize, um, um, our criteria that we laid out in there. So, trying to be very transparent about how we would approach it. But knowing that our natural attrition rate, um, would probably accomplish a lot of that, probably not in the right spots that we need. But that's where we then follow through with our staffing process as well as, um, our other language commitments.
Aaron.
Bonnie, um, and, um, Andrea, could you guys also speak a little bit to part of the work session when we asked questions about how the staff, how, what you're, you know, what you've discussed with the staff, like how they actually feel. I know Shannon's here. Shannon's, you know, obviously been part of Holton for a very long time, like what the, you know, just the comments have been that you're hearing so we can kind of start working through some of this.
Well, and certainly I think.
What they want.
Yeah, when I.
Yeah, their timeline.
That's when I went and communicated out the layoff language this spring. I think both, uh, Holton and then Willow, and I think Sue would echo the same and Shannon can speak to it. The staff appreciated the conversation because they, they, they want a decision is kind of the consensus, consensus that I get from the buildings. Especially those uber engaged buildings where they, it's been really tough to not know what the future holds. And so trying to reassure that there's going to be processes in place. We're going to be looking at our whole system, not just these buildings. But then having a larger staffing process. But I think, certainly correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, but I think the consensus from most staff is let's make a decision and then move forward.
And, and holding off versus not holding off, you, we just throughout twenty, twenty-seven potentially, you know, I mean, what, what were their feelings on that also, please?
I would say the same thing is, is it staff, it's hard culturally to kind of think of something looming over them. And also as a building leader, we see, um, staff making decisions for themselves based on what they think might happen. So they might want to leave the district. They might want to leave buildings. So those buildings that we're talking about are kind of left with holes for the past couple of years. Yeah, that we're finding to have to fill because they're making decisions based on what they think might happen. So. Definitely this year in particular, right? Like we, I can think of a few positions in Holton, um, where it's been difficult because even a new person coming in is like, well, is, are, am I going to have a job in a couple of years? So that's a new, uh, I think factor that's come in or variable that's coming to play in particular this year. So the consensus would be what I'm hearing is a decision sooner than later is what staff would, is hoping for.
One last question as you're talking here. Um, looking at these different models on here. And option three is closing Willow and option five is closing just Holton. Can you speak to how that might affect the staff if one were to close versus the other? And maybe that additional dreaded timeline? And Nick, if you could also speak to that pertaining to the boundaries and how long that type of a model would be able to be sustainable, just keeping one of those schools open, please?
Well, so you, how long could, if we just, if you just chose to close one financially, how, where are we sitting? Is that kind of your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I see the numbers. I see the, I see the numbers below, but I mean, going out, like, I mean, are we looking at, if we were to close one? Like, are we looking at five years from now, two years from now? Like, what's your, what's your read on it? Just in opinion? On how long we would be able to sustain like that, given all the circumstances that are being thrown at us here? And then what that would do from a staff standpoint is kind of the second piece, I guess, instead of the first piece.
Yeah. So, um, when you look at the budget models and, and Bonnie did add them to that folder, so now people have access to them in there. We start, we start looking at a deficit, um, even with the operational referendum passed, we start looking at a deficit as soon as twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. So basically two years out, um, you know, type of thing. And, you know, it, it's not big, it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollar deficit. People say that's a lot of money. Well, in the scheme of a eighty million dollar budget, it's not, not a huge amount. But that, the following year it grows to one point five and then three million if you do nothing, if you just, if you just keep six buildings open. So if you chose to, you know, for example, if you chose to close, uh, one or the other, um, either Willow or, um, or Holton, you know, closing Willow saves about two million dollars a year. Closing Holton saves about one point six, give or take a year. So, um, you, you basically would delay those deficits, uh, if you only closed, if you only closed one of them, for the most part, you could delay them at least five years, four years, five years, Bonnie?
I think the other thing that it, it doesn't come out in the projection amount of the cost savings is just, we have two buildings that have some very significant infrastructure. And, you know, Willow, we just put in a chiller that was three hundred thousand dollars. We didn't have a choice. We had to do it. There's a lot of other mechanical systems in both those two buildings that either we need to make a decision that we need to fix them. Or, you know, and if you did delay the decision, things might break and we have to fix it. And now there's more money out the door. So I think that WOLD study was pretty, um, accurate of those expenses, but those savings or costs aren't in the projection models, just something to think about.
These are more operating savings. I mean, uh, if you, if you go back to that, uh, you know, like Bonnie said, if you go back to that WOLD kind of condition of those buildings, separate of, of operating, you know, they're, they projected, you know, this was back in twenty twenty-two that, uh, Willow needed about eighteen million dollars worth of work, nineteen million dollars of work and Holton needed about, uh, about five and a half million dollars worth of work roughly. Those are not things that we can just take care of in our regular, our regular budget. I mean, as Bonnie said, you, you're going to have to go back out to referendum in order to maintain those buildings. If, if that's the, if that's what you want to do. So.
Okay.
I also wonder what the cost savings is because I'm not quite seeing it on here of just not having electricity and.
Are you talking about that, the facility, the facility cost savings?
Right.
So that is, that is built into that bottom number. So, um, you know, we see where it says three million or two million at the bottom. So, uh, we do have a, we have a separate worksheet that we, we tracked, what we tried to look at, the, at the time when we created this, the only thing we had a full twelve month run on was the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So we'll be able to get an updated one, um, put together, but built into that three million dollar savings or two million dollar savings is the actual utility cost with those buildings. And, uh, you know, it's, it's not a huge dollar amount, but it's several hundred thousand dollars every year, um, for each of those buildings.
And you'll be able to add that into this?
Yeah, we can, we can get a new updated, we can get a new updated, uh, look of a twelve month, basically the last twelve months. This is how much our, our utility bill was, this is how much, um, you know, we do on, um, snow removal, grass, things like that, uh, associated with it. It would be separate of repairs. It would just be, you know,
Yeah.
just our overhead, basically. Yep, we can do that.
Brian?
Kind of a tangent on that same point. One of the, one of the concerns I hear in the community is that continuing to own those buildings comes with a cost. You have to, even if no one's in them, you have to maintain them, keep them safe, so on. You may not have numbers today, but I wonder if you could speak to if one or both were to close, what, what would be the options for the district with those buildings? And, and, and even in the near term, are there operational costs of continuing to maintain them?
Yeah. So, um, you're, you're, you're exactly right. So when you have a, when you have an asset like that, or you have a facility like that, you, you do have to, you still have to maintain it. So unless we totally mothballed the building, and that means basically you drain everything out of the building, all the water lines and everything, all the cooling lines and, and heating, all this stuff, uh, which is not an overly easy process to do, so that you allow that building to freeze in the winter. It's really hard on buildings to not be used. It's like houses. It's really hard on a house if there's nobody living in it. And so, um, so typically what happens is we're still going to have to pay even if we weren't using, let's say Willow or Holton. And you want, somebody said, why don't you just close it? And wait a couple of years to do something with it. Well, we'd still probably keep it from freezing. So that means we're going to pay to heat it, uh, or, uh, in the winter. And then you run into a little bit of an issue of when you have a closed up building like that and it gets to eighty, ninety degrees out and you're not bringing a lot of fresh air in. It starts, you start to worry about mold, you start to worry about some of those other components. So you, you do have to, you have utility costs even in the summer. So there is cost of maintaining them so they don't just basically fall in on themselves. Um, and, and so there is that. As far as what do you do with them? The board, if the board chose to, uh, close one or two buildings, some of what we have here, um, you put them up for sale. And a lot of people think, you know, these buildings are worth lots and lots of money, but you have to remember if we have to stick eighteen million dollars into Willow River Elementary School, whoever buys it for something is going to have to stick a large investment in it, uh, into that building. And so, uh, same thing with Holton and, and things like that. So sometimes, you know, that, that can be something that is really hard for people to wrap their mind around it because, um, there's the nostalgic value of a building and, and the fact that it's been around for a long time. And then there's the reality of what somebody will actually pay you for that building. And, uh, developers are a, uh, they, they, they don't make money by buying high and selling low, right? I mean, so they're, you know, they're, they're, they're definitely out to try to get their best deals. So you know, there have been developers that have reached out to us on both of those buildings and my response to them has been neither building's for sale because neither building's closing. Uh, the board's made no decisions. And they said, well, can we get information on them? And I said, no. You can't get information on the buildings until we have a decision. Um, because, you know, we have a, uh, we have a process where we keep, you know, certain aspects of our building for safety reasons are private, especially while we're using them for kids. And so we don't just push that stuff out to the community or anybody that wants access to it. So, um, I think there is interest in both of those buildings, but again, you know, we're still trying to sell this building right now. So, um, yeah. So do you want to go through and kind of let's, you know, talk pros and cons of option one? I know there was kind of a, a motion on the table. We can, you can either rescind the motion and go through the options and make a motion each one, or we can vote just straight on Aaron's option to start with, or what do you want? You want to start?
It was just a request, like, are we ready to do that?
Okay.
I didn't mean to make it sound like I wanted one right then and there. It was like, okay, can we do this tonight? I should have added the word tonight to it. Um, so I didn't, I don't want to jump the gun there on it, but, um, the, I, I do, I want to, I just want to ask, um, so other people know, um, were you able to come up with any compelling data, uh, or live models of that K-two, three, five elementary that, I mean, we discussed that a little bit last meeting. You weren't able to really.
Yeah. So, uh, I went through, yeah, went through and tried to, tried to find, um, you know, why, why grade configurations, you know, tried to see what research was out there, uh, as it related to, uh, there are several districts, um, that are doing grade alike models. Um, there's been some different research on grade alike schools, improving collaboration amongst, uh, teaching staff. So for example, like right now, uh, third grade at Holton is a one section building. That teacher is, is a singleton versus if you're in more of a grade alike model, you're going to have other peers that are all teaching the same subjects. So there's more collaboration pieces, uh, things like that. Uh, I was able to kind of look at, um, some of the things, you know, multiple transitions and stuff like that. We talked about that a little bit. There wasn't a lot of, a lot of data. We know that the biggest things that impact kids with transitions are when you switch models. You know, teaching models going from one teacher all day as an elementary and to now you're traveling between teachers, going to middle school and then going from, uh, taking, uh, one group of kids and mixing them with other groups of kids. You know, so multiple elementaries going to one middle school. Those are things that, that weigh on kids. Not as big of a, uh, thing according to research is, okay, just because you switch buildings with the same group of kids and the same model, it's just you're switching buildings, you know, so that's, that transition itself isn't as big of an issue. There's a limited number of districts in Wisconsin that have, you know, like McQuantheansville, I think has, um, K-two, three, five models. There's just a handful. There's not very many. Um, you know, you see it in some of the, uh, some of the other suburban areas. People ask, what is the best grade configuration? And quite honestly, it's what will fit in your buildings most efficiently. There are districts that have high schools that are ten, twelve, high schools that are nine, twelve. There are rural districts in our state that are K-12 buildings. There are, you know, there's just a variety of different things. And so there's not anything real conclusive that I can point to or say, hey, here's a list of fifteen districts that are doing this and it's really good. Um, and it's going to improve these things. So I, I just don't, um, I, I couldn't find any data related to that. You and I talked on the phone about that as well. But really it's, it, it really came down to the, the biggest benefits are going to be operational efficiency. It's not necessarily all of a sudden you're going to see scores go through the roof because we did something like that. But it's not a huge dollar savings. If you look at the dollar savings between those two models, it's not a huge dollar savings. One of the things that it does help us with is allowing us to ebb and flow a little bit better with, um, neighborhoods. Cause you now have seven or eight section buildings. So you have like seven sections of second grade. So if all of a sudden class sizes start to get bigger, you add a section and it's not like you've dropped the class sizes drastically. You might only drop them by a couple of kids. Where, uh, in more of a regional elementary model, we don't have neighborhood elementaries. We have more regional elementaries. We currently kind of have regional elementaries and, and this would be an even more regional approach. Sometimes it can, it can spike a little bit more. We don't have as much, much wiggle room, but I would say, there's no evidence that, that points that one's going to be better than the other. I mean, so to go to the K-two, three, five model, I don't have any data that tells you, hey, this is definitely the, the, the silver bullet.
The only stuff that I found actually, none of them appeared to be public schools. They seemed like they were smaller schools with much lower, like example, um, like Holton would maybe, you know, because they are using, because they have a much less kids in that school. So I can see a school that size doing that kind of a model, but when you start looking at what these would be with four schools, that's, I don't see any examples in the state period on those. And they, they seem like they were, the, the one or two that I found were like Montessori style. They only had a handful of kids. So I just wanted to point that out. I, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward with the model, but we can't even provide an actual real life example, a real living example of that model being portrayed, um, with success, um, with any even relative statewide district.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, McQuan has it. McQuantheansville has it. It's a very high performing district and they, they have grade alike elementaries. But there's not, there's not a whole lot of them.
Okay.
I also wonder with the transportation, if there would be a in a increase in transportation costs, having that?
Yeah, there, I mean, there definitely is a potential to have increased, uh, transportation costs or transportation saves. A lot of it, um, we don't know until we have boundaries set. You know, that's that's one of the tough things people always, you know, people ask and tell you a boundary, it's hard to model. that's one of the tough things people always, you know, people ask, and until you have boundaries, it's hard to model what, what it's gonna take to get it done. So right now, I just was trying to find researchers who are talking. So, um, McFarland has, uh, K-two, three, five. Hamilton has K-fours and five-sixes, and they have two of them that are K-two, three, fives. Toma has K-two, three, fives. Slinger has K-two, three, fives. McQuanago has, uh, K-two, three, fives. Rylander actually has K-threes, four, fives. Um, and then, like I said, uh, McQuan has, um, or did at one point have that. You know, it, it's just, and again, it goes back to that, there's, you wouldn't do it because you think it's gonna be the most academic, because there's just no research one way or the other. There's no, also no research that tells you K-fives are gonna outperform K-twos. I mean, it's just, a lot of it has to do with what fits in your buildings, so.
Mr. President?
Megan.
Um, I, it just sounds like a logistical nightmare if you have like a second grader and a fourth grader, and you have to pick them both up. Uh, then you're paying for after-school care for one kid just because you can't be two places at once, or, you know, you need both parents. And those are kids not of an age you wanna leave home alone. So, um, yeah, I think that, that is a huge downside. Or if you're dropping your kids off at school, one of them's gonna be late every day. You're gonna have to pick. Um, so those, yeah, so those things seem very difficult. Um.
Well, and logistically, they, they wouldn't start on time, or they wouldn't start at the same time. So for example, if you were gonna pair Hudson Prairie with Rivercrest, you know, Hudson Prairie, uh, if that's gonna be the first building that gets bus drops, you know, maybe it starts at eight fifty, and Rivercrest starts at nine. And then on the way back, uh, you're picking up at Hudson Prairie at three fifty, and you're picking up at Rivercrest at four. So there's a, you wouldn't start them at the same time. They'd actually kinda be paired up, and, and you would stagger them. But again, if the board has no interest in it, don't, don't think that I'm like, hey, you better go this route. I'm just telling you, it's definitely an option. Um, and there are, there are districts that do it. It's just, it's just not an overly.
Mr. President?
Popular option.
Can I say one thing first? Um, just to, to your point, Megan, um, you know, Maria did spend some time on this, and, and, and she's like, you know, many families have kids in multiple buildings, families with kids in multiple elementary buildings, yours would be one of them, you know? Um, families with kids in an elementary, middle, and high school. So, you know, her, her says she'd love to see more information on some of those districts that do it. Because, you know, kids are resilient and families make things happen, you know? I'm not wording that probably correctly, but I just wanted to, you know, uh, I personally am not a fan of the K-two, three, five. But I've made that clear. But I wanted, uh, cause some, just some, some of the back and forth. Kate?
Um, I think because we're looking at deadlines here, we need to move forward. And in my opinion, I'm comfortable removing that option. It's not saving us a ton of money. There isn't a ton of research saying that this is an amazing model. So I don't know, Erin, if you wanted to continue your, uh, motion, or what everybody else is thinking.
Then I, I make a motion to eliminate the two K-two and two-three-five elementary building option number four from this potential staffing scenario for elementary options.
Motion from Erin.
Second.
Second from Molly first. Um, all those in favor of eliminating? Oh, any further discussion? Sorry. I think we've discussed it. Quit. So, uh, all those in favor, say, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, that, that option is eliminated. What do you wanna call the next option, Nick?
Um.
To discuss?
We just, uh, if you go to that sheet, um, you can, you can pick whatever option. You got option one, two, three, and five left on the table. You may say that, hey, you're gonna try to get down to four options tonight, or three options tonight, so that you, you know, can continue to get feedback. Yeah, whatever, I mean.
I think looking at option number one is important tonight.
So if people have pros and cons of option one, or what they see is the pros of keeping option one open around the table? If anybody has any pros for option number one?
I have. I could, I could start the discussion. Um, I think, you know, pros are people are pretty comfortable with what they have. They like their schools. They're all good schools. It's a pretty well-oiled machine moving forward. Cons, I think, are, um, it's not sustainable financially. And it's a, an equity equitable issue where we have classrooms where teachers have twenty-five kids, twenty-eight kids, and other teachers have in the teens. So, um, in my opinion, I mean, there's lots of nice things about option one, but it is not sustainable financially or otherwise. So I would go to eliminate that. That would be my opinion.
Kate?
I also, the equity part of it, I think for our students, some students are getting a ton more attention, which is wonderful. And some students are not getting that same amount of attention. So I think it's not only for the, the teachers, but also our students who are getting those variations in class sizes.
Mr. President? Um, so I, uh, this coming year, I'm gonna have a kindergartner at Holton and a fifth grader at Willow. Um, so I've, I'm experiencing both of these and have experience with both of these, uh, schools, and I love them both. And they are wonderful places with their own traditions and quirks, and they're fantastic. And, um, what I also see is every, pretty much every parent I talk to in the school district loves their school. So, um, uh, that's just one thing I wanted to share from my personal experience. Um, and I'll stop there.
Brian?
I just kinda on the theme of pros and cons, just kinda, just to say out loud on the, on the con side, I'm, I'm also a board member who this coming fall will have a four-K kid at Willow and a third grader? Yes, a third grader. At Holton. And, um, on the con side, you know, taking this step, we're, we're, these places have a culture. They're the center of their communities. It, this, it is tough. But, um, I was just sitting here thinking about, you know, to keep them open, yes, it is an option. But to do that, we have to pay for it, right? We have to find a way to pay for it. And there's a couple of options to pay for it. The state, the state could be an option, but so far they haven't really come through, right? There's referendum. We would, we would likely to maintain these schools over the next five years, the next ten years, given enrollment projections. We'd need to go to referendum again and again, and it would need to increase each time. And the, the third option is to start making cuts in other places. So it's class sizes need to increase. We would still be dealing with the equity component. Um, we would have to start eliminating programs. Look at special, you know, it, it would be a real challenge. So, so just sort of thinking it through, there, there are real costs to the rest of the district to maintaining these two buildings, even though, you know, it, it is so tough losing one or, one or both. There, this, they are community centers. There's, there's, um, there's culture we're losing. But, um, I just kinda wanted to, to make that point.
I, uh, I think, uh, we, what we've learned in the last, I would say, the talk was starting five years, or not five, but four. But since there's a potential declining enrollment, housing costs, things like this. I, I, I would hate for this board or future boards down the road to have to go through another operational referendum because of state funding, that again, we saw another example this year when we thought we'd get some good news and we didn't get good news. All the, all the, all the projections I've been around as far as, uh, enrollment has proved true. You know, a lot of people thought it wouldn't. Um, I am very, very, I recognize greatly the cost of keeping buildings open that are underused. I think it, it, it is a Band-Aid that needs to be pulled off. Um, I think the community understands and is ready. I, I just, to be going through another operational referendum and building referendums with the cost of the needed maintenance at the, and we're setting up really nice right now with these, this last, you know, building remodels. The high school's in excellent shape, middle school, I mean, we are really good, some very good facilities. I think it would just be hard, knowing with the challenges going forward, which have proven that they're not going away. Yeah, I, I see absolutely no way six schools can stay open.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to remove option number one from the scenario of elementary options.
Motion from Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Aye. All those opposed, say nay? So that motion passes to take option one off.
Are you wanting to reduce any more options at this point? Or are you wanting to move forward with kinda the last three options and have more discussion in September? Or what, how would you guys like to proceed?
Mr. President, I would like to, from here, maybe get input, whether it's continued conversation with the board or in community conversation, and having people in the district maybe emailing us, talking to us to let us know what their thoughts are on the remaining three options.
I wonder, um, about if we, if, if we have the options of closing one of the two or both in the discussion of what, which one to close, if we were only gonna close one. You know, I, I'm thinking that, say you close Holton, it's the biggest cost, it's the biggest potential future cost to keep that building running. And you think, well, any development out in Holton, maybe keep Holton open for another year? I, I mean, are we talking about an expectation of two years, three years, five years, potential, see where it is? Or, cause Holton will always stick out to me as a, a concern from class size. It's still a two-section class. That's not going away. That's gonna be a frustration. So unless we're willing to say, keep Holton open because of its location and, and community, but then we have to, we have to redraw boundaries almost every year to keep, because I will not keep, I would never vote to keep a, you know, fourteen, thirteen kids a class moving forward. We, one of the big pushes for this, you know, with the remodel and everything, was to increase the, uh, the experience and class size and be fair to teachers, staff, and families. And so I don't know where we go with that.
Mr. President? I would kinda like to just add to that a little bit. Um, I feel like keeping option three and option five, I, I, it makes me sad that the community, I feel like, might be kinda like, I mean, we're kinda like picking and choosing now, and we're, I feel like it's almost pitting people together, would pit people together. You know what I'm saying with that? I, I don't think it's really fair when we're looking at these operational costs and how much, um, money needs to be put in to repair Willow and saying, oh, we're willing to invest in this group, but we're not willing to invest in that group, and there's not as much wrong with that school. Um, and they're further to bus, and we have two board members sitting here, and it's like, my heart's breaking for you guys. This is like, it's terrible. This is not easy to sit up here and go through these options, but to continue to drag the community through something that the end result is closing the schools, according to what we just said. Um, I think, I think we just got a quick hit, quick kick in the can. I mean, we really just need to, like, eliminate all the hardship that we possibly can, I, to have emails coming in from one school versus the other. You know what they're gonna say? Please don't close my school. And I can't blame them, because I'd be one of those parents too.
And we, and we did see that three years ago. We saw the Holton parents, you know, being very vocal, just keep us open. And the Willow parents come with their, so, so are we, by keeping both those options open, are we setting ourselves up for having, uh, again, another, another hardship to the community itself?
Well, and then you talk about redrawing those boundary lines. Because if this is a matter of, I think Nick just said, like, what, four years, couple of years? We might be able to sustain with one being open versus the other. We're gonna be redrawing these lines again and doing this again. We just went through this, what was it, six years ago? My family was part of that. It was horrible. We had, we moved from Rivercrest to Prairie, and, and, I mean, the options, it's, yes, my kid was fine. It's really hard. I think it's harder for the parent than it is for the kid. And it's like, you're, you build your home next in a community to be with that community, and it's like, it just feels like everything, everything is not good those couple of days. It's just not. But it, it did get better, and it was, it was okay. And as parents, we have to make that okay. And as a board, we need to do what we, the responsible thing, and minimize this as much as possible.
Brian?
I, I agree with that sentiment that, that, um, you know, we don't wanna pit the community against each other. And however, um, while our, our agenda was public today, our agenda, the last meeting was public, I'm not ready to, to vote to close one school or another. I don't, I don't think we've given the community an opportunity to, but we have an obligation to hear the voices of the community before we take a vote to close an actual school. I don't think anyone in our community was expecting that that would be the choice tonight. I'm, I'm a proponent of going through a process of having a special meeting to hear from the community. Um, certainly, I don't, I don't wanna do it just for it to be painful. Um, but I, I don't think this community is ready to, all of a sudden, you know, we have a newspaper, but maybe open Facebook tomorrow morning and say, oh, the school board voted to close a certain school or another school or two of them. I don't think we're quite ready for that.
Mr. President, I'll piggyback on that. And I totally get what you're saying, Erin, and my, one of my fears slash concerns is now this turns into like the Willow versus Holton face-off, right? And like, um, that makes me sad. And I think, uh, I will feel real weird personally, but nobody needs to worry about my feelings. Um, but I think, you know, I was one of those parents from Holton who, uh, it got me to run for school board. I was like, there's no way we're gonna see growth, like, let's get the board to stop. And I was wrong, and the demographic projections from the demographer have turned out to be right. But I don't, I don't feel ready to vote on those, because I feel like people are on vacation right now. I think people are just like, like, I just did my back-to-school shopping yesterday. I'm worried that it's gonna feel like the rug was pulled out from under people, and they didn't even get a chance to speak their mind. And I, there's something about feeling like you've been heard, even if the result isn't what you want, that I think does make a difference in, in these sorts of processes.
Can, how about scheduling a listening session? Could we start with that?
I, I totally sympathize what you're, relate to what you're saying, Erin, because that's kinda how I am. I'm like, if I make a decision, I'm, I'm good. We're good, go, you know? Um, but we're not the same as a family that has kids at these schools. So as much as, you know, a listening session, yes. The one thing I really feel like, if we do, I think we should do it. And as we move forward, doing that, understanding that we're here to make the hard decisions, and this can't be just, um, like a pass-the-mic thing. I think we talked about that. We need to have kind of a structure to it so people can have their say. And it's important, um, like, we need to listen. It's hard stuff. But with the understanding that we have to do something, and this is financially not, um, We can't go forward. And the only way I was, when I was a kid, um, my dad was a real estate broker and built houses. And in nineteen seventy-nine, you know, it was great. Everything was awesome. Interest rates went up to like twenty percent. And we had to move from our beautiful home to a spec home. And it was like, we had no lawn. It was like, it was a horrible thing. We had to, I mean, horrible. I survived clearly, but it was hard. It was really hard. You can't, you shouldn't minimize how difficult something is, but also we need to know that we will be okay. Like what you said, we will be okay. So we can do hard things. That's what I have to say.
Well, and, and a lot of times the numbers don't lie, whether it's enrollments, projections, um. The, the budget, you know, the, the, the state aid and how much money we get back. So those kind of tend to in my mind, make a decision for me, right? But I, I agree that, um, we don't have to make that decision today. Also, you know, fifty percent of our public, our voting public minus six votes. Said no, right? So, uh. The, I remember we have, like Nick has said many times, seventy-five percent of our community wants us to be efficient with our money and is not involved. So like I said earlier, we've got some really good facilities that have, we've invested in. And improved and should be very proud of. And they also give us the flexibility to answer some of those questions. If we had extraordinary. Growth like we had fifteen, twenty years ago, we could address it without again, going to. The taxpayer. These are very important points, I think.
Mister President, I would suggest that in our next work session, we discuss. Dates for a community meeting and the structure for it.
Sounds good. So does anybody else have anything they want to add to this then? Cause that can't pretty much. Takes us out to the end of this discussion for tonight. Very good. Accept a motion to. Yeah, we'll be moving to closed session, but I'll need a motion to adjourn or throw into closed session.
The board will entertain a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. One E to discuss the Safeway Bus Company contract and the district properties at County Road UU and Rocky Drive. B pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C. To consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee. Over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding superintendent evaluation.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? Second from Brian with a voice vote, um, Doll. Garza, Gerlock, Powers, Rozowski, Rudy. Oh, she's not here, that's right. And Bowman, aye. We are now in closed session. Nick needs a five minute break.